Ladies and gentlemen, when everyone stands for the pledge, at this time I'd like to introduce, the pledge will be by Thomas Brenner, retired Army veteran. Sergeant Tom Brenner served the United States Army in numerous tours, including Vietnam. He enlisted in 1971 in airborne with the 101 in Vietnam. He was also later assigned to West Point instructing troops, infantry tactics, and repelling and stream crossing. Tom later joined the reserves serving from 1974 to 1992. His numerous medals include the National Defense Service Medal, Good Conduct Medal, Combat Infantry Tree Badge, marksman with an M-16, Overseas Service Bar, Vietnam Campaign Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, and two campaign stars, an Air Medal, certificate of bravery and decorations of different honors. Thank you for your service, Tom. The floor is yours.
Thank you. First, before we do the pledge, I just want to thank you all for having me today. Very kind of you.
Thank you for being here.
And I appreciate the kind words.
Thank you.
On that note, I pledge your agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, everyone, please stay, remain standing. We had seven Navy sailors aboard the Fitzgerald who were killed in a collision with a container ship on June 7th. That was Dakota Rixby, Shango Douglas, Najak Zim, Noah Hernandez, Carlos Simeon, Xavier Martin, and Gary Reim. I'll pledge to just keep our servicemen and our thoughts and prayers that lost their lives defending our freedoms, which we're able to partake in today. A moment of silence. Thank you.
Once again, I'd like to thank you all for having me, and have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Tom. Thank you. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, June 28, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting to order in the Commissioners' Conference Room at 10:00 a.m. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of their minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Proclamation presentation. You have a certificate for Jingle for Joey. Can we have some of the staff come up to talk about Joey? And what we're going to be having going on, I actually think it's today. No, Friday.
Friday, yes. Good morning, everyone. I'm Ari Kelly, Clerk of Judicial Records of Lackawanna County, and I'm here today to discuss a event we're going to be having on Friday from 10:00 a.m. till 2:30 p.m., the first floor of the Administration Building in the hearing room adjacent to the Family Court Administration's Office. It's a basket raffle for one of my coworker, Joe Del Rosso. He has been diagnosed with cancer and has undergone surgery and is recuperating, and we're just trying to help generate some funds to help defray the additional medical costs that are going along with his treatments. So, it's Friday, 10:00 a.m. till 2:30. Tickets, we have so many wonderful baskets for baskets of cheer, lottery baskets, anything that anyone could possibly want, available Friday morning, and I brought Debbie Rotell and Pablo Vizgarondo with me, who has been working with Joey. And Joey's been a county employee for over 30 years, so if anyone's available, we'd like to see you on Friday and appreciate anything you could give to us.
Our county employees are, we're more, I think it's more like a family here, and when a situation occurs such as what Joey's going through, a second bout with cancer, you know, everybody tries to come to the aid. I'd just like to commend, I know it's not just the three of you, it's the whole office and hopefully all of our staff, everyone in the Administration Building, the courthouse, comes over on Friday and spends some money on some tickets because, you know, those medical bills, you know, I mean, they're extreme, and we want to make sure that Joey gets better and...
And everyone's been so generous so far with baskets and donating, so we appreciate it, and it is through the efforts also of the Family Court Office. And so, if you're available, stop down Friday.
There's a lot of good people in our community, so anyone, the viewing audience, even if they want to stop in, they can come in and buy some tickets for the raffle.
I'll be there.
You'll be there?
We'll be selling tickets.
And make sure you get down there for Friday. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you so much for what you're doing. I greatly appreciate it and...
Thank you. We appreciate the support.
Yeah, absolutely, and good luck, and I hope you have a successful event.
Thanks.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Unfortunately, it's sad that these situations are so frequent in northeastern Pennsylvania and Lackawanna County. Good luck, and we'll certainly support your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We're all in Joey's corner, and, you know, we believe in, we think that he'll win again. But, like I said, this is a family government where everybody cares, so please, anyone, if you're able to, please make it down on Friday between 10:00 a.m. and 2:30, Family Court Administration's Office, first floor.
Commissioner O'Malley, I just wanted to mention, Susie Gelfen also is here.
Oh, Susie! Susie Greaties, how are you? Thanks for being here.
She's been with the county for many years and is very instrumental in helping get a lot of the baskets and gift certificates.
Susie, would you like to come up and say a few words? Come on.
Everybody better be there!
Yes, go ahead, Susie. Let everybody know. Let Susie go up there. Susie's got a great smile when we get on the elevator. Susie, pull that mic down so it gets...
No, I'm not going to win all the prizes. Everybody tells me I am.
You better not win any of them. The fix will be in.
No, I am lucky, but, no, everybody better be there for Joey. And everybody's trying everywhere. Got to do something. Everybody's got to be there. I left, it's in Scranton Times on Sunday, under Jimmy Connors' portrait.
Yes, it was.
Okay, and I've given it to, I've given out the paperwork to the whole town, walking all over the place, and I got prizes all over town, so everybody better be there.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much. I have a check for you personally for $100.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, thanks. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That will be a good start, at least. Okay, we have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Jingles for Joey, honoring achieving a designation of an organization providing great works in Lackawanna County for a fellow employee and all of us caring about our fellow man. Given the 28th day of June of 2017 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Let's come forward. Susie, you're walking great.
Thank you.
My friend's getting a new one this morning.
Where do you want me to go?
You're tall. Okay, Susie, you could hold it up.
Oh, okay.
No one likes Susie.
On three, one, two, three.
Is this the way, Fran?
Nope, you're fine. One, two, three. One more, one, two.
Thank you.
We'll be there. See you on Friday, okay? Susie, we'll see you Friday, okay? You know that.
I love not to win everything. Not everything.
I'll see you Friday.
Thank you.
It's just nice to know that there's so many people that just care, and when someone's in need, that everybody's running to their aid. It really matters. Okay, 17-0173 Pennsylvania Turnpike by Commission, recognition of 911 Emergency Service Employees. All right, Dave, do I have all the employees here? All three? All right, good job. Good job.
Hi, my name's Todd Leece. I'm the Traffic Insurance Management Coordinator for the Pennsylvania Turnpike, and I appreciate having the opportunity to come and present this resolution. If you don't mind, I'll read the resolution here.
Absolutely.
For the employees. This is in recognition for an incident that occurred May 4th, 2017. A resolution recognizing the employees of the Chinchilla Hose Company, Clark Summit Fire EMS, Pennsylvania State Police Pocono, South Abington Police, Lackawanna County 911 Center, and the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission for their quick action to resolve an incident that occurred on the Clark Summit Bridge. On May 4th, 2017, the Pennsylvania Turnpike Operations Center received a phone call from motorists advising a suicidal male and his elderly teen who were threatening to jump from the Clark Summit Bridge at milepost 129.6 southbound on northeast extension. The Chinchilla Hose Company of South Abington was dispatched by the Lackawanna County 911 Center to the bridge at the request of South Abington Township Police for the rescue of the young man on the bridge. Assistant Chief PJ Hughes of the Chinchilla Hose Company EMS recognized the need for additional manpower and potential for high-angle rescue, requested additional support from the Clark Summit Fire Company, again, who was dispatched by Lackawanna County 911 Dispatchers. South Abington Township Patrolman and Negotiator John Judge successfully encouraged the young man to return to the bridge deck, and the quick response time, the teamwork that was required saved the life of the uninjured male. The action by all doing this incident were exemplary demonstration of leadership, teamwork, and cooperation for the incident. Therefore resolved, the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission commends all responders, operators, and dispatchers, rescue personnel, law enforcement, and commission employees for their rapid response, preparation, attention to duty, and adherence to sound procedures that resulted in the successful conclusion of the incident. Resolved, the copy of this resolution is transmitted to those who responded to the incident to share with their respective employees. So, we thank you on behalf of the Commission. Valuable partners to have the 911 Centers. Unfortunately, at the Clark Summit Interchange or Clark Summit Freedom Bridge, we have these incidents not infrequently, and we appreciate all the times. Turnpike did issue a work order to install some additional fencing there, so hopefully these kind of incidents will hopefully go away soon, so we appreciate that.
I can never say enough for about our emergency services, first and foremost. They're unsung heroes.
Yeah.
You know, they really are. Last year, we had, was it two of our operators saved, told the mother how to do CPR over the phone and saved her baby. And this, that's just one of numerous times, including today. And we're here to congratulate the three of you for what you did. You know, someone was thinking about taking their lives and it was stopped, you know, and also like to thank Patrolman Judge for what he did for talking them down, but listen, it all starts with 911, and you're on the other line, and you're keeping a cool head while that person on the airline is like, "Oh, my God, I need help. I need to do this." And you're making sure, "Where are you at? What's the location? We're sending this." Whether it's a fireman, it's a policeman, it's the EMT, whoever, any type of emergency. It really is, you're really unsung heroes, and the community has no, I mean, I think they have an idea, but they have no idea exactly how much you actually do beyond the fact of sending a fire truck to the house. Or maybe you're talking to a child whose parent is laying on the floor and telling them, "They're on the way, they're going to be okay. Make sure mom is mom-responsive. See if mom's doing..." I mean, they're the things that really matter. You know, you're like the first line of defense to make sure, to save lives. You really are. And we'd like to just congratulate the three of you and our director, who does a fabulous job, and just thank you very much. It really matters. Commissioner Cummings?
I think you hit every talking point there is, Commissioner O'Malley. Honestly, as a nurse, I know when my patients either press their button or call, they're waiting to hear that voice, that reassuring voice on the other line, telling them that somebody's on their way and they're going to have help very shortly. And that one minute or five minutes that it takes for them to get there to that person seems like an eternity, and you helped to make it less in longevity, so thank you so very much for all of your work, and I greatly appreciate it.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Thank you very much for your work.
You know, just to the viewing audience, you know, this is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365. 911 Center never closes. Emergency Services is always on and operational, and it's there to make sure everyone's safe. Fran, you think we'll just have everybody come over for a quick picture, and we'll have them do the, put the certificate in the middle?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to be in the middle.
We'll get everything. Yep, you do the certificates.
Yeah, I'll, how about I open it up here? That's work.
Thank you.
I thought she was telling me to turn around backward. Get my better side.
Here we go, one, two, three. One, two, three. One more, all smiles. One, two, three. Perfect.
And I didn't mention it here, but, you know, this, something like this, this kind of call is touching to me. I had a brother that committed suicide, so I'm definitely very glad that, you know, the 911 Dispatchers are here. So, I appreciate it.
Good thing.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I guess I should give this to you, otherwise.
Thank you.
You're welcome. See, there's our tax dollars.
You know what, like Commissioner Cummings just said, that's absolutely our tax dollars at work, and I'd just like to thank John Holben, Velma Joseph, and Brian Gray. Thank you for being our operators every day, making sure we're safe. Thanks, Dave. Thank you for bringing everyone in. Thanks. Thanks. Okay. You're on 17-0186.
Burgett's Electric City Taxi. Come on up and tell us a little about your business.
Morning, everyone. My name is Robbie Burgett. I own Burgett City Taxi, Inc. in Wilkes-Barre, and Burgett's Electric City Taxi, Inc. in Scranton. The Scranton operation is, we just opened on January 3rd of this year. I purchased a property through the, from the county. I received a lot of guidance and assistance from the Commissioners' Office, so I want to thank them for all that they do here. And we're located on the corner of East Locust and Cedar Avenue. It's a large lot, and I renovated the facility. And what we do that is, should stand out is the fact that we run, and I purchased and we run brand-new taxi cabs, and we, with a three-year limit of use. And if I feel that that would be, if in the taxi industry, that of course is recognizable. PUC is in much in agreement with that. In 2007, they set down a rule where they couldn't be more than eight model years old, and so to hear that, I was buying brand-new. They were happy with me, of course, and so that's always good. And toward that end, I removed them after the three-year mark, within a few months of time after their third birthday, so to speak, and we renew and replace. Toward that end, we are, we run, we're the first company to run security cameras in the cars. We work hand-in-hand with law enforcement, and we assist where we can. Those security cameras are provided for the safety of the riding public, first and foremost. That's paramount. Toward that end, the taxi cabs with the front-wheel drive and the fact that we use studded snow tires, and we have a track button and things toward that end, all generate our intent to provide safe travel. What else might I add to that is, we are the only operator in the state of Pennsylvania to provide fleets of brand-new taxi cabs. Other than an owner-operator that might be situated in Philadelphia or Pittsburgh to actually own a fleet and run it as a company, not a lease program, we are the only company in the state that does run fleets of brand-new taxi cabs, so we're proud of that. And they can only be founded in Scranton and Wilkes-Barre, PA. And that's really notable, in my opinion, and what we do, and what we want to do here is, of course, provide and raise the level and raise the bar in taxi transportation. Should there come a need that people need to travel and take a taxi cab, they can be assured that they would get prompt, courteous service, uniformed drivers, security cameras, brand-new taxi cabs. And if I can think of anything else, I would. I mean, we do everything we can to raise the bar in taxi transportation, but what we're most proud of is the fact that in Wilkes-Barre, Scranton, that is the only two cities in this state where brand-new taxi cabs are incorporated as a fleet of cars for the riding public.
How about an ashtray?
I'm sorry?
How about an ashtray?
Glad you asked before I did for you.
Ashtrays, you say?
Yeah.
Ashtrays.
I know.
But, yeah, so just in conclusion, I would like to thank the Commissioners for their assistance, because I made some calls, and I've spoken to Commissioner O'Malley at least four or five times. You guys have been very helpful in all the little, and because, and a lot of things pop up when you're starting, it's a new startup and you're in town, and it's nice to be well-received. And we intend to, we run 10 taxi cabs now. We expect to grow it to 15, and we intend to employ between 30 and 40 residents of the city of Scranton and surrounding areas. So, that about sums it up.
Bob, talk about your, what generation are you in this?
Well, my dad started in 1978 down in Wilkes-Barre, and he managed a couple taxi companies before that, and we're in the members of the Teamsters Union. We're not a union shop over there with the taxis, but they did away with taxi companies as union, in the union, at least in 401, but my dad started the company down in Wilkes-Barre, and he retired in '07. I kept nagging him to put on the brand-new taxi cabs, get on the Internet, get in the Yellow Pages, because he wouldn't believe in that. He thought word of mouth was the way to go.
The old, old days.
Old school. And he said, "Yeah, do it when it's your money." So, I did. I saved my money, and I took the leap, and I'll tell you, the cars are dependable. You know, you buy a new car, you expect it to run well, at least the first three years of its mechanical life, and we have next to no problems whatsoever, other than flat tires and needing brakes. So, that's a real big benefit to us. There's no downtime. Our service is prompt. Because of that reason, we don't have cars in the garage, we don't have mechanical bills, other than small time, such as brakes and things like that. But I'm second generation as far as owner. This is my sister Renee Hill. Hills are well-known through Tom Hill, her husband, in the city of Scranton. She lives here all her adult life, and she is my partner and a co-owner in the company. Raised in the taxi industry family, knows the business, and so when changes come along, I'll certainly share those with her, and between the two of us, we will run the company our lives, throughout our lives.
Nice.
That's an awesome story. I love to hear generational businesses. That's amazing.
Thank you.
And you're a son and daughter that were actually excited about taking it over and thinking about changes that you were going to utilize in the future, so good for you. Congratulations. That's an incredible story, and now you're expanding, and I'm so proud to have you here in Lackawanna County.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up and sharing your taxi service with us and the improvements that you want to see happen. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
It's always good to have new businesses start in Scranton, Lackawanna County. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
I know Mr. Hill pretty well, for a pretty long time. He does a great job, and I'm sure you'll do just as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, tell us, what's the phone number? Okay, the viewing audience, they want to get a new, they want to go for a ride in a new cab. What's going on?
We put on our Wilkes-Barre Division shirt, so we're not walking around with the right, correct one on our back, but we have them over there, and of course, all the drivers are made to wear them, and the number's 207-2200. It's easy to remember. I, in the short, in a short while, I'll be doing a large list of promos on Channel 16. I have to buy an ad through Bob Loftus and buy in on promos where it's brought to you by Burgett's Electric City Taxi, Inc., coma brand-new taxi cabs. Call 207-2200 to help promote ourselves up here. We just started, we're still just, a lot of folks don't even know we're here. I had to wait for the phone book, and I had, and I'm on Google. We have a goburgit.com, a domain. So, doing all the infrastructural things you have to do, but our number is 207-2200. We have flyers, we're putting those out. We have business cards, we have Inkpen giveaways, and I do whatever I, what I can, and Renee, she's in charge with that, with her daughter. They run around doing the flyers, so we'll get the name out there, and thanks for asking about that, and we should get ourselves known fairly soon.
Work with our rail riders. I'm sure there's a market for that in our concert series.
Yes, we're looking...
And get up there, and there's some promotions they can do for you and...
Thank you for that. That's a good idea. Yeah. Yeah, it takes, everything takes time, but I stay on it, and I have Renee's help, and her husband Tommy's help, and my nieces, her daughters, and we'll get it done. Thank you.
Renee, are you the boss?
She's the boss, and I'm not there.
Renee, anything you'd like to say?
She's the boss.
Anything you'd like to say?
No, just that he does a wonderful job. My brother's a workaholic.
See, she always...
He's a perfectionist, so he demands courtesy from his drivers and help with the bags and the whole deal.
Yeah, I'm really, pretty strict.
Yeah, that's right.
Pretty strict over there.
Yes.
All that gets hashed out in the garage, and then when we're on the street, we're courteous, we're prompt, and we're safe.
And you're in a uniform.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's mandatory. You can't be on the property without the company shirt on, so. I tough on them a little bit, but you got to iron out the wrinkles on everything, so...
Bob, it's good to have your...
The riding public should enjoy it, and I would be shocked if they didn't, and I'll be certainly glad for their patronage, because like I say, we're, we just started up here. They're all purchased brand-new. The cars will remain for the three years, and they will be replaced and always maintained. And I'm a yakker, so I'm good for putting things in the paper and writing newspaper articles, so I'll be announcing when they're, when Burgett replaces and adds, and like for next year, an important note is to say, in 2018, I run the Kia Soles, all Kia Soul pluses, and in 2018, they're going to come out with an all-wheel-drive vehicle. I already run snow tires with studs in them for the safety of the riding public, which has never been done before, no one thought of doing. I don't know why they didn't, but I do. And so next year, when the 18s come out, I'll be looking to get my hands on those, and then I'll provide the all-wheel-drive vehicles and make it that much safer for the riding public. If you take care of that issue, that sort of is the most important of all.
Absolutely. Just like to congratulate the two of you, it's good to have a brother and sister team working together, second generation. But the last thing, thank you for investing in our community. I know that was an older structure down there. It's all refurbished now. You got the beautiful cabs outside. It's down on, what block of Washington Avenue is that?
It's on Cedar and East Locust.
But you can see it from Washington, is it?
You can.
Okay.
And it's a lower lot. There's an upper level and a lower level, and I expect to, another business going in there, but right now I have to develop and establish this, Burgett's Electric City Taxi, so...
Thank you for becoming part of the tax base of Lackawanna County.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks for having us.
We're going to do a certificate.
So, today's certificate of recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Burgett's Electric City Taxi in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County. Given this day, June 28, 2017, by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and myself, Lorraine Cummings. Come on up.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Nice to meet you, too. Congratulations, that's great. I look at you, give the kids a thank you.
Thank you for the kind words. I think so.
Where's your certificate?
Thanks so much, everyone. Appreciate it.
George, make sure you give it, Bob. He has some work he wants to do, so.
Thanks again.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bob, George is there in the back row. He's going to give his card.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
It's just great to see another business start in the city of Scranton. Another great opportunity. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Hi, Joan.
Hi, Joan Hoda-Wanis, 220 Linden Street, Scranton. I wasn't able to attend the prison board meeting yesterday. I walked all the way down to the prison, only to see a sign on the front door saying, "You may not enter with your cell phone," so I hiked it on out of there, so...
Joan, you could lead them right at the front desk. Would you come in if you want?[1670.95]
Thanks so much, everyone. Appreciate it.
George, make sure you give it Bob. He, he has some work he wants to do, so.
Thanks again.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bob, Bob George is there in the back row. He's gonna give his card.
Thanks.
Okay. It's just great to see another business start in the city of Scranton. Another great opportunity. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Hi, Joan.
Hi, Joan Hoda-Wanis, two twenty Linden Street, Scranton. I wasn't able to attend the prison board meeting yesterday. I walked all the way down to the prison only to see a sign on the front door saying, "You may not enter with your cell phone." So I hiked it on out of there. So.
Joan, you could, you could leave them right at the front desk. We can come in if you want.
Oh, no. It's just a draw and quarter you and put you on a spike and shoot you in the head. Doesn't say that you may not enter. But I'll, I'll know that for the future.
That'll scare people from going over there, won't it?
I'm a law abiding citizen.
Don't walk through that way, okay?
You have the same agenda item today, seventeen dash zero one eighty-five, which is the inmate communication service agreement with GTL. And there was also a small article on it this morning in the paper. And I noticed that, among other things, this agreement will provide four hundred and fifty free correctional-grade tablet computers, which the inmates will be using for video visitations with their family members, which is great. But apparently, the tablets used for video visitation will also be loaded with a digital law library and other resources. And I understand Warden Betty is out there somewhere? Okay, it's probably, yeah, it's probably in the back there. But I would like the commissioners, as well as the prison board, to consider consulting with the Scranton Public Library about what other resources can be loaded onto those tablets. You know, the friends of the Scranton Public Library have been providing free books to restart a library program down at the prison. And we've been talking with Jack Finnery and hoping to get a viable library program back down there, which would benefit not only, you know, the inmates, but the whole city. Because, you know, maybe supplement their GED education and other things. So if we're gonna get the hardware for free, let's see how, how, you know, we can take advantage of it, okay? Perhaps this could be done at no cost to the taxpayer, which is everybody's objective, okay? So I'm a firm believer that libraries do nothing but good. And so if we can, as you consider this, see how much we can exploit these four hundred and fifty tablets. Be nice to have four thousand and eight, eighty tablets, but maybe we can exploit that and get bigger bang for the buck. Okay, that's all.
Joan, the warden's right there, so we could set up a meeting with, if you'd like to. Gonna talk to the warden. There you go. Joan, thank you. Oh, I can see you got your little man with you.
Yes, yes, it's summer vacation for some of us.
You're working.
Yes. The only question I have, I have a, a hearing to attend at eleven and I'm sure will not be able to get through all of your chief of staff's presentation on reassessment. I would like to know if hard copies will be, or available, or, and/or will it be posted this afternoon online on the county website?
It is a ten-minute summary or less. I believe you will be able to listen to it.
Okay. Will it be available online as well?
I, I believe it will be.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
The summary will be written.
Sir, name, name and address.
The summary will be written.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
To qualify myself, my name is Ralph Chase. From nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty-four, I was the chairman of the assessment board and de facto administrator of the assessment office. I see on today's agenda, there's probably a recommendation coming up on reassessment. And I wanted to make you aware of certain things that you should know, that I learned the hard way in the assessment area. Number one, when we took over that office in nineteen seventy-two, we interviewed about seven or eight different companies looking for a reassessment company. And we found no one competent. We also looked into the cost of it at that time, and it was four to five million in seventy-two. I would guess today, the cost is probably twelve to eighteen million to do a reassessment, which is a major undertaking for the county. One thing that a reassessment will do, it will blow the cap off the millage. So that when you get an upgraded value, your millage will have to go down, but then your cap is that much higher and the capability to tax is almost unlimited. Not a, not an advantage to the taxpayer. Who will benefit from this? The chief beneficiaries will be the slum lords that have converted properties and allowed them to go downhill. The people who have not taken care of their property, who will not benefit, will be the little elderly person that has taken care of his property all his life, put his life and soul into that property, and will now find that taxes will go to the point where he can't or she can't afford that property anymore. Another thing that will happen, before you can turn an assessment on, you've gotta go through the appeal process. A cottage industry will develop in the appeal process, which will hang you up for years before you can turn that reassessment on. And the beneficiaries of the appeal process will be those people that can afford possibly a sharp lawyer to come in before the court and argue their point. And you will find that your reassessment will become like Swiss cheese because you will find that decisions will go against you that will adversely affect that reassessment. If you do get a good reassessment, you will find that your current assessor's office, and I've talked to your assessor, assessment administrator, John Foley, and I know that there's some good people in that office, but the task of keeping up a good reassessment is almost impossible without some very sophisticated staff. So all in all, before you venture into a reassessment, I would advise you to think about the taxpayer, think about what can happen to the taxpayer. And the fact that people think that, oh, a reassessment will knock my taxes down, it will not. It will not. Very few people will get a tax break. Most people will get a tax increase. So with that, I'm available anytime you'd like to consult with me. And hopefully, you'll make a good decision on reassessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for coming in, Ralph.
Good morning, Pat.
How are you?
Good. Commissioners Bob Bollis, Scranton, on the reassessment. I think Ralph nailed it right to the head. But one thing missing is, what do you do with the nonprofits in the area in your reassessment? Nonprofits have been taking a total advantage of the taxpayers in this community. We have a property that had a zero investment or assessment on it. Yet it got assessed at a half a million dollars. How did that come about? You can't assess something that had zero and then put on what you think it should be worth when it wasn't. So we're having issues now. We're in litigation with them. And it's a shame that we have to spend this kind of money both, on both sides, with the commissioners or the county and our own attorneys to do what shouldn't be being done. When you do your assessment, you have to be fair for everybody in this room, in this whole county. And you have to really look seriously, the reassessment in the city of Scranton, because they have the school, they have the commissioners, and they have the Scranton tax. So they're getting hit with a triple whammy here. So how do you properly do a reassessment that covers all those issues to the people in this city? As we know where the city is already, it's, it's gonna be back in serious condition. And there's various, very, very serious questions on the transactions between some of the authorities that were just sold. But when you reassess, your reassessment's gotta be fair right across the board. So you cannot, in any way, shape, or form, I believe, discount the nonprofits in this city out of any assessment that they now have to start paying their fair share to take the burden off the taxpayers that can't pay their bills right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I have one announcement and I'd like to bring one other person up. I'd just like to announce that our next meeting is gonna be next Thursday, July sixth, at ten AM. There's some conflicts with the commissioners the following week. And that will be at the commissioners' conference room. At this time, I'd like to bring up Gerard Hatman to the podium. Gerard Hatman is part of our community relations team. And I know Gerard wasn't expecting to come up today, but he should be brought up today. Gerard Hatman has been part of the Scranton Rotary Club for years. And tonight, what's gonna happen, Gerard?
Commissioner, I believe with respect, you're referring to tomorrow evening.
Tomorrow evening.
I'll be the, it's our presidential installation dinner. So we'll transition from our current president, Connor Malone, to myself as the incoming club president.
Congratulations.
I should note, folks, that the presidency changes every year. And for the most part, if you are in the club for any length of time, your turn will come up. So I, it's not, it's not too much of a distinction, but.
But it is.
But that is, that is the truth. So, and I should note, one of our, one of our past presidents is actually on the staff here, Rick Jones, is our director of risk management. Is also a past president. So he can tell you also, I'm sure.
Well, Gerard, you know what I learned from the word president? President means what everything, no one else does, you take care of. That's what president means. Whether it's for twelve months or twelve minutes, that's what president's means. And also, in the new world, clubs are dying. And it's good to know that the Scranton Rotary Club is alive and well. And there's young men such as you, who does a great job in community relations, to head it for, for twelve months. So we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And as well as I am, and of course, we all just saw how humble Gerard actually is.
He is.
Because he couldn't even take that compliment.
Yeah.
And every meeting he goes to, he's complimented on his work. And, and you are such an asset to our community and our county. Thank you so much. And thank you for all the work you do, even outside of here. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Terriani?
Gerard, you're a joy to work with on a daily basis.
He is.
You do a great job. Put forth a professional, public appearance for the Lackawanna County. You never have an issue doing anything that's ever asked of you and more. It's, it's great to have young people involved, and young people involved in, in Lackawanna County government, in any government. Just very, very happy to have you here and, and thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Gerard.
Thank you.
We, we don't want to forget about you, definitely.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay. He's so humble. Okay, chief of staff, executive summary report on reassessment.
Commissioners, today I'm happy to present to you a summary of a report on reassessment in Lackawanna County. And I am going to have to read this report to you. It should take approximately ten minutes. I did meet with the Board of Commissioners and pre-presented you with a lot of work papers and drafts and many information for you to review. And today I've summarized the report for yourselves and for the general public. The first page of it indicates an outline, which I, I am gonna read it because it's, it's gonna be helpful to everybody. The introduction and purpose of the study, past history of reassessment in Lackawanna County, meetings held, date, times, conferences, attendees, companies that perform reassessment in Pennsylvania, proposed cost of reassessment in Lackawanna County, and options available to the Board of County Commissioners. Before we could really talk about this study, we should really define what is reassessment. A reassessment is a process by which the assessed value of real estate property is revised to keep the value consistent, what the property is worth on the open market, and to assess properties, properties fairly in comparison with each other. During the two thousand and sixteen budget hearings held in various communities and locations throughout Lackawanna County, and at other public county commissioners' meetings held during calendar year two thousand and sixteen, several citizens approached the Board of Commissioners and asked that the commissioners begin the process of considering conducting a comprehensive property reassessment in Lackawanna County. A formal resolution from German Borough adopted by the German Borough Council was also received by the Board of Commissioners dated June first, two thousand and seventeen. Letters and inquiries were also received from Scranton City Council urging the county commissioners to conduct a county-wide assessment, which date back to two thousand and fifteen. Discussions were held by the commissioners during regular work sessions, as well as at publicly advertised commissioners' meetings. There was not a clear-cut consensus on the issue, and the chief of staff, being myself, was asked to begin to gather information on what it would entail to conduct a total property reassessment on over one hundred and one thousand properties in Lackawanna County, as well as an estimated cost of conducting such a process. Since the board is comprised of three individuals and each commissioner has her own views on how to conduct such an analysis, an attempt is being made today in this report to present to the board what resources, both in terms of financial resources and additional personnel it would take if such a decision was made to carry out this process, as well as provide copies of any relevant documents for review by the Board of Commissioners. The chief of staff was also asked to conduct a brief review of property tax reform in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, specifically to look at such proposed legislation remedies, such as Senate Bill seventy-six, which would change the way that school property taxes are paid for in the Commonwealth. What began as a brief study turned out to be more a complex assignment, which ultimately would take several months to be able to gather the information for submission to the Board of Commissioners. Part two, past history of reassessment in Lackawanna County. The last county-wide reassessment conducted in Lackawanna County was in the mid to late nineteen sixties, with new assessments phased in the region from nineteen sixty-six to nineteen seventy. Accurate projections of what the county paid at that time is unavailable. The reassessment was conducted using local realtors. In nineteen eighty-six, Majority Commissioners Joseph Corkman and Ray Alberigi changed the assessed value ratio for assessing real estate taxes from thirty-five percent to one hundred percent. This was necessary to allow the county and other taxing bodies the latitude to adjust tax rates and stay within the law and follow provisions set forth in Home Real Charter, County Code, and Municipal Codes. This decision was challenged in the court by then-Minority Commissioner Charles Luger. The court upheld the county's authority to change its predetermined ratio and in addition stated that the limitation on millage in the Home Real Charter is preempted by state statute and is therefore invalid. The county began a formal reassessment in two thousand and five by resolution of the Board of Commissioners under the direction of then-Majority Commissioners Robert Cordero and A.J. Munchek. New assessments were scheduled to go into effect for two thousand and nine. The company hired to do the reassessment for the county was Century Twenty-One. That company no longer exists in the Commonwealth, but several of the principals formed a new company known as EST. The reassessment began and Century hired individuals to visit all properties in Lackawanna County, began collecting and assembling data. A new Board of Commissioners was elected in two thousand and seven, took office in two thousand and eight. Upon review, this new Board of Commissioners found several thousand errors and the reassessment was indefinitely suspended in October two thousand and nine by then-commissioners Corey O'Brien and Mike Washoe. They stated that to correct the areas, errors, and complete the reassessment at that time would cost up to an additional eight million dollars, a cost they said the county simply could not afford. The county had previously spent four million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars up to this point. Data that was prepared was to have found many errors and a partial entry of completed properties could be entered into a new system. Several of the records remain now in the possession of the county assessor's office and are used as a resource tool if a property is sold or an assessment appeal is taken. A review of the records confirmed many thousands of errors. Then, in October twelve, citizens, and in particular this time, the city of Scranton, had asked the county to once again begin a property reassessment. The two commissioners at that time, Majority Commissioners Washoe and O'Brien, argued a reassessment isn't worth the cost and higher taxes that would be required to pay for it after Commissioner O'Brien had County Chief Financial Officer Thomas Durkin and County Deputy Director of Appraisals, John Foley, develop an updated cost estimate. Mr. Durkin said the county stalled reassessment left the county's assessment data in better shape, eliminating some of the errors in the parcels, but the county would have to, but the county would have to start a new reassessment because properties might have expanded or otherwise changed. A new reassessment at this time, estimated by Mr. Durkin and Mr. Foley, was estimated the cost somewhere between six-point-nine and eight-point-four million dollars. A series of formal meetings was held by myself over the last six months, starting on December second of two thousand and sixteen and ending on May eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. It's important to note in the record that these meetings were held. Although I held several informal meetings with department heads, commissioners, and others to gain information, formal meetings that were documented on the record were on December second, two thousand and sixteen, at Great Wolf Lodge in the Poconos, Northeast Regional Kneecap Reassessment of Real Estate Properties. A seminar was held to explain to counties how and why to begin reassessment and if it was necessary. Attending on behalf of Lackawanna County at that seminar were Chairman Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Notterianni, Chief of Staff, myself, Chief Financial Officer Thomas Durkin, Assessment Administrator John Foley, and several members of his staff. I immediately followed this up and met with several counties, surrounding counties, to find out how they went about reassessment, what it cost, and what was involved. On January thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, I met in Monroe County with Greg Christine, their chief clerk, and Cindy Tribal, their chief assessor. On January twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen, I visited Wyoming County and met with Bill Gaylord, their chief clerk, and Catherine Voda, their chief assessor. On February fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, I visited Luzerne County, met with county administrator Dave. On February 14th, 2017, I visited Luzerne County, met with County Administrator Dave Pedri, Tony Alu, their chief assessor. On February 28th, 2017, I sat down with two leading advocates who come to several county commissioners, Joan Horawanitz and Marie Schumacher, Scranton residents, attendees at normal commissioners' meetings, and they presented information and findings to me. On March 6th, 2017, Solicitor Don Fredrickson and myself met with Doug Hill, the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania County Commissioners Association in Harrisburg, also to gain additional information. On March 7th, 2017, I sat down in this room with Brittany Kinsman, Northeast Regional Pennsylvania Association of Realtors, and Conrad Bosley, Lackawanna County Appraiser. On March 10th, 2017, we received a major presentation from Tyler Technologies CLT Division, who does reassessments. Paul, Paul Miller from Tyler made their presentations. Attending on behalf of the county were Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Notariani, Attorney Brazil, Attorney Fredrickson, CFO Tom Durkin, John Foley, and myself. On March 29th, 2017, at the suggestion of Doug Hill, who is the Executive Director of the County Commissioners Association, I set up a meeting and met with Attorney Joan R. Price, an assessment attorney specialist in Philadelphia. On May 11th, 2017, I followed up on several conference calls with her, which we may talk about a little bit later, with Attorney Price and Attorney Fredrickson and myself to gain much-needed information on reassessment and legal opinions. At this time, there are only two companies that perform reassessment in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. They are licensed and it can provide reassessment. One company is EST, who is the successor to Century 21 that began the process for Lackawanna County in '27, and Tyler Technologies CLT. Both companies have worked in multiple counties in Pennsylvania. Both have been endorsed by the Pennsylvania County Commissioners Association. Most counties that have conducted reassessment have issued an RFP, a request for proposal, to assess the services and cost of a licensed company that conduct a reassessment in the Commonwealth. Part five, proposed cost of reassessment in Lackawanna County. There are in excess of 101,000 tax parcels in Lackawanna County. Each and every property would have to be visited personally, inspected, photographed, data collected to be inputted into a county information technology system, as well as creation and input into a mapping system. Each property owner would receive a notice and have the right to obtain both an informal and/or formal appeal. Historically, this process could take anywhere from one to three years, from start to completion, depending on the availability of company staff selected by the county. Estimates of what the true cost of reassessment would at this time be a ballpark figure used in comparison to what other counties similar in our size have paid for reassessments. There is a range available from $55 to $125 per parcel. Neighboring counties of Monroe County estimate they have spent at this time over $6 million and the reassessment will be going into effect within the next two years. Luzerne County has expended over $11 million and still has outstanding appeals coming in. The reason that one can reasonably assume that Lackawanna County may be on the high end of this cost is that the last formal assessment hasn't occurred in Lackawanna County in 50 years. And extensive work would have to occur to complete this process. Using a very conservative approach, the cost could be as low as 5.6 million to a high approach of $13 million, depending on what a company proposes, as well as information technology upgrades, major increases in the county assessor's office for a period of at least three years. Even if the county was able to gain a lower cost than normal, when you factor in the IT and the additional personnel cost, a fair estimate would probably fall into $10 million range today. Because over the last three years, the county has taken steps to operate in a very fiscal-conservative manner and carefully analyze all expenses and maximize revenue, Lackawanna County today finds itself in an enviable financial position as it might be compared to other governmental bodies. Steps have been taken by the county and a binding resolutions guarantees that the county must have a minimum 5% cash balance available at all times. Because the county has worked extremely hard at maintaining a reserve balance, the credit rating of the county has been restored, a surveillance fee on bond issues has been dropped, county audits are being conducted at, on time. As a result of this new management principle, Lackawanna County has been able to refinance outstanding county bond debt the last two years and save over a projected $21.5 million. This also, they, there also has not been the need for a tax anticipation note in Lackawanna County. And when the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania did not pass and fund their budgets on time, Lackawanna County was able to use its own financial resources to manage. It is for many of these reasons that the county at this time is not in a position to be able to use any of his cash reserves to fund a reassessment. It should be known, should be noted, and this is very important, that reassessment is required to have a revenue-neutral tax effect on all taxing bodies. There is allowed a 5% deviation from prior tax revenues for a taxing authority in the first year following a reassessment. Following the first year, taxing authorities are bound by their specific codes, municipalities, or charters regarding future tax increases. If the county decides to expend up to, an example of $10 million, on a reassessment, in all probability, a substantial, a substantial tax increase or an additional bond issue borrowing would have to be considered. Therefore, at this time, there are several options available to Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners, and I've, I've listed five options. One, immediately order the reassessment process to begin in Lackawanna County by preparing a request for proposal for services with timeframes, costs, and utilize existing county funds to begin the process. Two, begin to update and implement computer technology assessment study utilizing pictometry and other tools available, then issue a request for proposal for process and preparation of a reassessment of property. Three, begin to conduct a comprehensive county information sessions throughout Lackawanna County communities to begin to explain what this reassessment would mean to homeowners. Four, consider placing a referendum question on the ballot in the November general election to give the people a voice in whether they want the county to commit the final financial resources to complete a mandatory property reassessment, which cannot be changed by a succeeding Board of Commissioners if this Board of Commissioners were still here at the time in the middle of a reassessment. And I have a legal opinion to back that up that Solicitor Fredrickson may explain later if asked. Lastly, allow the current system to remain as is and do nothing. Thank you Commissioners for allowing me to present a summary of these findings to you today.
Um, you know, this is an issue that's been floating out there for a long time. And it's, um, it's concerning, it's concerning on both sides. You know, um, we're elected to make decisions on behalf of the citizens. I know what it takes to make tough decisions, I've been making them for over 17 years. So at this time, I believe the only way that this could happen is to make a motion, the referendum for reassessment be put on the November general election ballot for the citizens to make their decision on reassessment. Donnie, tell me about the legal opinion, because my biggest concern on all this is the fact that there's $4 million that Lackawanna County Government could have had that has gone nowhere. And if, we don't know who's going to be here in 2020. And if it started, and we're looking at 8 to 12 million dollars supposedly at this point. Does a referendum bind it? Is it ironclad?
Commissioners, yeah, generally, let me start by explaining. In Pennsylvania, generally referendums and initiatives are not allowed under the state law. However, Lackawanna County has a Home Rule Charter, does have within our charter a provision for referendum and initiative. Uh, we consulted with Attorney Price, who, I, I don't want to say she's an expert, but she's kind of the authority in Pennsylvania on reassessment law. She represents a number of counties who have gone through the reassessment process and her, her practice is specializing in reassessment, uh, the area of reassessments. We're of the opinion, because Lackawanna County's Home Rule Charter allows for referendum, yes. Uh, the question can be put on the ballot, the voters can vote on it, and it would be binding going forward. In other words, if the voters approved reassessment, a future Board of Commissioners would be stuck, uh, completing the process. They wouldn't be able to overturn the will of the voters.
Because my concern is, a lot of people, you know, we have people that may think that this could blow up in our faces and, like you said, two years into another, another administration, that's just the money's gone.
In 2009, the, the previous Board, a succeeding Board of Commissioners stopped the reassessment after, like you said, spending 4.3 million dollars. And they didn't feel they could at that point afford it, uh, and it, and it stopped. But if it was to be approved by the voters, then it would, it would have to succeed, uh, proceed till the end, yes.
I'm here since 2012 and I've learned one thing. This is the, you know, we're the stewards of the taxpayers' money. And their money matters. And I want to make sure that there's no way that it could be thrown out the window again. That can't happen, no one could stop it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a costly endeavor Commissioners, there's no question about it. And, uh, it's going to have to be paid for somehow, so.
Before I ask for a second on that motion, I want Commissioner Cummings.
Well, you want me to read my statement now?
No, absolutely.
Okay. Initially, I want to clarify what appears to be a misunderstanding, uh, misunderstanding on the part of some people, including our local reporters. Uh, some weeks ago, an editorial was written that suggested that the surplus funds in the county can be used to pay for, for, uh, an assessment. I stated at a recent meeting that there is an ordinance which provides that we must keep a surplus for accounting and finance, for financing purposes, which, uh, Mr. Wallace just, uh, confirmed for us. Uh, as it stands, our surplus is necessary in order to maintain our bond rating for financing and to avoid a very costly surveillance fee, which was necessitated when county finances were not, uh, in the shape that they are at the present time. Uh, the fund balance has to be maintained and its existence saves the county a significant amount of money. Uh, in addition, there is actually an ordinance which requires a fund balance, as, uh, Mr. Wallace had, had alerted us to. Um, there was recently another editorial that indicated a surplus could be used to pay for assessment. And I, I must take this opportunity, uh, to, uh, say that the surplus cannot and should not be used to pay for reassessment. It would be fiscally irresponsible. Uh, from taking, talking to my fellow commissioners, I believe that they are in agreement that our fund balance cannot be used to pay for reassessment. So what that leaves us with is a tax increase, um, which everyone knows that most of us sitting up, I, I believe all three of us on this board would, would object to. Uh, one of the issues which must be resolved and where is the money going to come from if reassessment would be conducted? Um, and it was estimated the cost would be 8 million, uh, over 10 years ago. And I, I think it would be, I don't think it would be unreasonable to say it would be over 15 million as Mr. Chase came in and talked to us about. Um, I really believe it would cost up to 18 million at this point with some of the discrepancies that we have, um, listed, um, in the previous assessment. Um, so the only way that the county could pay for this, as I said, is through a bond issue. And, um, you know, everybody saw some legal fees that were issued, um, in Scranton. And, you know, we would also be looking at legal fees along with associated costs of issuing bonds and as well as payments, um, and I just, I believe it's unwise and financially irresponsible to do this at this time. Um, during the past year, myself and Commissioner O'Malley voted to centralize government at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. Approximately $17 million was taken out in the form of a bond issue for this project. The project is underway and is not expected to be completed for a year or so. While we believe we have taken into consideration a lot of different contingencies, a project of this nature is uncertain and we cannot determine the actual cost. Uh, to, and it's unwise to engage in any further project which would cost as much as a reassessment until such time as the project is completed and the cost determined finalized. Moreover, most recently, my fellow commissioners voted to enter into an agreement to consider the purchase of a property adjacent to the jail. This is yet another project which can cost several million dollars and absolutely will require financing. I understand that they believe this project is very important. However, from a fiscal standpoint, the cost of this project should be determined and finalized before anything is done with respect to attempting to pay for the cost of a reassessment. In addition to the above projects which are pending and the costs of which aren't determined, CPAC, uh, which is an organization for counties and county commissioners, has cautioned that there's a $3 billion shortfall in the state budget. Warnings have been issued by this state organization in light of projected budget cuts. At the present time, as I speak, the state budget has not been resolved. We do not know what budget issues we will have to address because of state decision-making on the budget. It is unwise to undertake any financial projects of the magnitude of the cost of a reassessment in light of this circumstance. This has been the position of the state organization which provides advice to county commissioners. It is my position that we exercise caution and defer to their expertise. Um, there are a lot of misunderstanding and misunderstood concepts about reassessment that I'd like to address. It's often said that after a reassessment, one-third of the properties will rise in assessed value, one-third will remain the same, and one-third will decrease. I have asked Mr. Wallace whether or not there are any studies or statistics to support this assertion. And I've researched it extensively myself to try and find that that's an accurate assertion. Uh, he's indicated that there are none, and none are, are included in this report. I've researched the issue, uh, myself, and I have found that there are no studies or statistics to verify this notion. More importantly, I would want to know the following items before I can make a decision on reassessment. And I urge my fellow commissioners to consider these matters before they make any decisions. On a reassessment, what percentage of properties which have been owned by one individual for more than 30 years or so will go up in value on average, as, uh, Mr. Chase had spoken about? If, uh, someone had kept their home up to date and, um, you know, maintained it, of course, uh, that's going to go up in, in an assessment. And anyone that says it isn't, I, I don't even understand what they're thinking. Obviously, the longer there is a homeownership, the greater the chance that an individual is retired and on a fixed income. I believe that this is an important statistic to consider and to research before any reassessment is accomplished. My concern obviously is that we have a great number of individuals who are elderly and on fixed income in our area. These individuals have a tendency to have longer terms of homeownership than others. I would want to know what the impact on this category of individuals would be, as I believe it would be harmful. In addition to, um, 40-year-old single, uh, mothers such as myself, it would have been harmful. So, uh, my home I purchased in 1988, so I know that I would be affected by it. Although, um, I'm more concerned with the populations like German who had requested this, who said that they had 90% of the homes were all, uh, built prior to 1930. In addition, is there a relationship between the number of parcels that will have a tax increase to the length of time that a reassessment has been conducted previously? I'm concerned because reassessment has not been conducted for some time. This may have the impact of a tax increase on a much larger number of parcels than anticipated or that anyone can foresee. I think this is important information for us to know in order to make an informed decision. Um, I've heard a number of individuals indicate that in a reassessment, the assessed value of properties will go up so that the common level ratio of Lackawanna County will de- decrease. Many individuals seem to think that it is good if the common level ratio decreases for Lackawanna County. The common level ratio is to be used only for calculating value for inheritance tax purposes, for transfer tax purposes, and for reassessment appeals. Materials published by the state on this subject, which were incorporated in the materials by Mr. Wallace, clearly indicate that common level ratio should only be used for these purposes and no others. Accordingly, the idea that if the common level ratios decrease, the value of properties will increase is completely unsupported and inappropriate. The best example I could give is what has taken place in Luzerne County. At the present time, the assessed values in Luzerne County, which had a recent assessment, are actually higher than the average sales across the state. Luzerne County has a negative common level ratio. Thus, while assessed values in Luzerne County have increased, in fact, the value of properties in terms of state sales last year decreased. For example, if a house in Luzerne County was assessed at $100,000, it would be valued under the common level ratio, which measures valuations across the state, at $97,000. Common level ratio only measures values between counties across the state. It does not mean that a particular va- property is worth more. This is a clear misunderstanding. A house is worth what it can be sold for, no matter what valuation is determined by the common level ratio. It does not mean that a particular property is more, worth more if the common level ratio decreases. At least one municipality has indicated that it is in favor of a reassessment because the millage would decrease. And they actually stated this would allow that municipality, according to statements made by its officials, to increase millage to its residents. Apparently, at the present time, millage in that particular municipality cannot be significantly increased without a court approval. I believe that the limitation on millage increase is a good thing as it places a restriction on how much taxes can be taken by a municipality. It requires municipal officials to look carefully at spending and live within their means and a budget like the rest of the world has to do. Reducing millage, therefore, can have an effect allowing for increased spending at the municipal level. Since reassessment is supposed to ha- to be revenue-neutral and the same amount of taxes should be taken out out after reassessment, reassessment allows for increases in millage, which could be an encouragement for spending. I believe court intervention is a wise thing, as it puts a limit on what government officials can do in terms of spending. I've heard repeatedly from officials of the city of Scranton that they believe reassessment is appropriate, as it will reduce taxes. Apparently, a number of officials have stated that the city of Scranton picks up the tab for most of the county. These statements do not take into consideration how reassessment works in the first place. Reassessment requires that each property be measured against three different tax bases. A property is measured against whether or not tax base in the county has increased or decreased, considering the county as a unit. In addition, it is measured as to whether the tax base has increased in terms of the municipality itself and the school district. In the city of Scranton, the city and the school district share the same boundaries. Reassessment by law must be revenue-neutral. That is, after reassessment, the same amount of money must come out of the city of Scranton and the Scranton School District, which once again, share the same boundaries. Reassessment will not, as a whole, reduce city taxes or taxes due to Scranton School District for residents of Scranton. The same total amount of money will be paid to the city of Scranton and the school district after reassessment. While certain properties may pay less, other properties in the city may, in fact, pay more to make up the same total amount of taxes. It is inappropriate, therefore, to suggest that a reassessment will automatically result in a reduction in city or school taxes for all Scranton residents. Reassessment is a very difficult issue and is one which I have researched extensively over the past several years. I believe that the entire property tax system is an unfair and unsustainable tax and that it should be replaced. Many in our state legislature agree with me. I believe that instead of spending money on reassessment, we should push our state legislatures and our governor to move for property tax reform, similar to a bill which is currently in the state legislature at this time and hopefully will be coming out on the Senate floor soon. In this regard, I hope that my fellow commissioners will join me in scheduling informational sessions on both reassessment and the alternatives which are available and pending in the state legislature at this time, and if approved by the solicitor, that the people should decide on a ballot referendum as to how we should move forward on reassessment. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Notterianni?
I appreciate what Mr. Chase said and Mr. Wallace. Mr. Chase mentioned also, that was 1972. We know the technology has changed dramatically since then. Television set that was $2,000 is now $400. We have technology available to us. We are engaged in a pictometry contract now that will make reassessment less expensive and more accurate. There's no question about its necessity to be reassessed. It hurts our economic development. Over 50 years since we've been reassessed in Lackawanna County, there are only nine states in the country that reassessment isn't forced by state government. We're one of two or three counties in the state of Pennsylvania that haven't been reassessed in a very, very long time. It hurts our community. It is misinformation. There's no question about it, Commissioner. But it's misinformation. It's one of the most important parts of reassessing, is to educate the people and let them understand what it will actually do and how it will actually help us. Anyone involved in economic development throughout the state, including people that work for us, will tell you that it's absolutely necessary for us to do. As far as putting on a ballot referendum, we have seen in the past few years how people do vote. If we don't educate them properly, we will not get that to pass. Look at some of the quality of some of the elected officials that we are getting currently. It's difficult to elect good, solid people. It's harder and harder to do that. If we don't educate them, it'll be very difficult to get it passed because they won't know what they're doing. They'll be afraid. It's fear. It's fear and it's wrong. This hasn't been working in Lackawanna County. We talk about it getting to be a better place. We work towards it. We all have the same hopes and dreams. It's the misconception about how to go forward and how to do it. I'm totally against putting it on the ballot. There's no question about it. I don't think that under Chief of Staff's reassessment report, we can actually make a motion. I don't think under Roberts' rules, we can do that because it's not on the agenda item. We could do it under new business, but we can't do that now and look for a second. I don't believe that's correct. It's 50 years and it is fear and it is misunderstanding. And there is no guarantee, one-third, one-third, one-third. There's no question about that either. But we do know that this current system is not working properly.
It's the same.
We have homes in Scranton where they've taken out six, over $600,000 worth of building permits. And the house is assessed at $29,000. It's not correct. It's not fair. And fairness does have something to do with it. It should be fair to all people in Lackawanna County. Businesses are reluctant to come to places like Lackawanna County when they see what we've done and haven't done during the course of our history. There's no question about it. Talk to anyone in the economic development world and they will explain that to you, including our own economic development people, including our own financial people that work for Lackawanna County. We have a lot of good people that work for Lackawanna County. It's very important that we continue to keep them here and have them go forward. But it's just not the answer. It absolutely is not. We need to reassess. There's no question about it. Mr. Wallace's, many of his studies that he gave us the other day. There's only three states that, there isn't a standardized procedure for the Council of Taxation. Three states in the country. The whole system is wrong and if we don't fix it, no one's going to. To try to put it off on referendum so that we don't have to make a decision is not right. That's why we were elected, to make decisions, to do what's right. Historically, in the past, not so much now, but doing a tax reassessment was politically dangerous. If that's the case, so be it. It needs to be done. We need to go forward. I'm willing to take that chance. If this doesn't work and people are upset about it, and it's going to work, but if people are upset about it because they're still misunderstand it, I'm willing to take that chance. I'm willing to do what I have to do to do the right thing for Lackawanna County, to move Lackawanna County forward. I totally disagree with putting it on the ballot. I think Mr. Wallace is one. In order to reassess, to begin to update and implement computer technology assessment study utilizing pictometry and other tools available, and then issue an RFP for process and preparation for reassessment of property. That's what we should be doing. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we gonna have a discussion on this or no?
Let me keep going. You know, this issue, like you said, there's two sides to this issue completely. But the one side that's absolute factual is that a Board of Commissioners came in here and they stopped reassessment. That is a fact. It is a fact. And the fact is, we don't know who's gonna be here in 2020. That is a fact. We don't have a crystal ball. I wish we did. I don't have a magic wand. Donnie? The legal opinion is what?
With regard to the referendum, Commissioner?
The referendum.
If it's placed and passed on a referendum, then the future Board of Commissioners will be bound by the will of the voters, Commissioner, correct?
Okay. Donnie, I'll ask you. If we sign a contract, like we have with Live Nations?
Correct.
Would that, we be bound to fulfill that contract if we hired Tyler Technology? Would the future commissioners be bound to continue that? Like we are with other organizations?
Well, there would be contractual obligation, certainly, Commissioner.
Okay. So that could force it off to go along also.
Correct, unless there's an out clause or something like that.
Well, if there's no out clause, then they can't. Then we still would be bound to do it. The next commissioners, no matter who they would be, would still be bound to continue.
Correct. They would have to follow the contract, Commissioner. Yeah. They would be required to follow the contract.
I disagree. If they were elected to change the outcome, they would have to be bound by that?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Would they be bound by our contract we wrote saying that they have to do reassess? Is that what you just said? They have to be bound to do reassessment?
Well, I mean, it would depend on the contract would have to be followed. Once it's approved, a contract would have to be followed, just like our Live Nation contract. It's a five-year contract, unless there was an out clause or something. And I'm not sure how they got out of the last one. I know that they did stop it. I'm not familiar with how they did it. It was before my time.
One other point just to make. There's only two companies in Pennsylvania that do this.
Correct.
But really, there's only one that's proficient in it. In other states, there are many companies that do this because it's done regularly.
And some it's not done at all.
Okay, now, let's get back to where at, Lorraine, you spoke. Commissioner Notterianni spoke. Getting back to that. $4 million was lost. That's the fact. Okay. I just for legal opinion. I can speak. It's my turn. Getting back to the fact of where we are in county government in general, where we've been. I think that county government's gone a long way since 2012. Got a chance to live it and now living into a second term. From the surveillance fee, saving $400,000 up to $1 million. Audit's done on time since 2011. Land bank creation. It's one issue, one individual. Lots of great things have happened in Lackawanna County over the last five and a half years. And there are a lot of great things have happened over the last year and a half. The land bank, 20-some properties backed on the tax roll. Our new slogan, investing in our future. Not investing in our future, investing in the future of everyone in Lackawanna County. Our 2016 refinancing. We wouldn't even be able to do that if we didn't have an unstable bond rating. That wasn't happening. It was not happening. We saved over $21 million on refinancing over the last two years, '16 and '17. Lot of great things going on in Lackawanna County. Community reinvest. Now, just since this administration came in, 30 ventures, $311,000, generating $2.6 million in public and private partnerships. The purchase of the Globe Store. Like you said, I've been around for a while. There was no tax increase. It lives inside of our leases. It's centrally located. It houses just about all of Lackawanna County government. And it's right in the middle of Wyoming Avenue, the deadest part of Scranton. It's gonna revitalize the 100, 200 block and it's gonna help with the mall and all of our shops in downtown Scranton. And it's gonna draw an extra couple hundred, thousands of people daily that do work with this every day, not to say the 600 to 700 employees that are gonna be there. No tax increase with this project. None. No military increase. None. And the savings, absolutely. No tax increase last year. Emergency services update. Complete emergency services update in the last year and a half. Amazing. Not costing the people of Lackawanna County a penny. $3.5 million in veterans' benefits through our Veterans Affairs Office. For our heroes. Great stuff. The Annex Building. We're not just leaving the building. We're making sure that it goes back in the tax roll when it's sold. We could just sell it to whoever, whether it's a nonprofit, and not worry about it. We're putting it back in the tax roll. A lot of great things have been going on in Lackawanna County. It was a lot of hard work that went from 2012 to 2017 to make it happen. And I just believe that this decision is a big decision that should be made on behalf of the citizens of Lackawanna County. We make decisions all the time. This is the type of decision that could affect our senior citizen populations where their taxes may double completely. Or if we get back to the one-third rule. Lorraine says it's not true. Some people think it's true. One-third goes up, one-third stays the same, one-third, one-third goes down. You know, that's, that's not, we're not even sure that's factual. And then, if we turn around and we do this, we do it and we pay for it outright, it's a 15% tax increase immediately. 15%. Because we can't touch that fund balance we have. We just can't because it will destroy our unstable bond rating. I don't know if our CFO is here, but it would be devastating. And then get back to concern of another board coming in. I mean, you never know what another board is going to do. You know, and I understand the other side. It's been 50 years since reassessment and I'm sure there's people out there that feel that's unfair to them. I feel for them. Is it legal, is that motion legal that I made?
Commissioner, as a Board of Commissioners, you can set the agenda and vote on as you wish. I would note that the, on the agenda itself was a discussion on the reassessment and there were many audience members who spoke on reassessment. I think under Roberts' rules of orders, the commissioners, if there's a majority vote, can vote to adopt a motion. You've done it many times in the past when things come up and you voted on motions. But that would be my opinion.
Okay.
John, do you have something?
Yeah. On the contract, you know, I think if you were drawing up a contract, I think you would wanna leave an out, that in the event something happened, it got to be more costly than anybody expected because that's the last experience, that you'd wanna leave maybe an out clause or a damage. But I think a Board of Commissioners probably could get out of it without the process we're talking about, putting it on the ballot. Maybe a damage claim, maybe a damage claim. But depends, it would depend on how the contract is worded. And as lawyers sitting here saying, knowing what happened before, how could you not leave it out in there? Like, I wouldn't want, you know, if you asked me, I'd say, leave something in case the next board finds it's too costly, that they can bail out on this thing.
That's right.
I mean, that's how I would negotiate that contract. And since there's only one or two companies, they can take it or leave it.
Right.
You know what I mean? And that's probably, if we look at it, that's probably what happened the last time. That's why they were labeled.
Well, probably, and we don't know that.
They wouldn't certify the reassessment.
And they gave us a price and we agreed to that price and we signed the contract, just similar to the contracts we have with other organizations. And we certainly don't know what Kaderah Munchak had done.
I would say it was probably done on the amount of work performed, you know what I mean, as of a certain time. And if they stopped working, then that was it. That's probably.
We've met with them and they seem to be there. They know exactly what they're doing. They know how long it's gonna take, how many people they need to hire, and how much it's gonna cost per parcel by the fact that we haven't done it in a certain period of time. And when you do it more often, the cost of it does go down. With our pictometry or contract that we are involved in, that would make it less expensive also. So we don't know what it costs. All I'm asking is that we put out for a request, for an RFP, as opposed to putting it out on the ballot first. Let's see how much it would cost. Let's see what kind of language we can get into a contract and let's look at it before we do anything further. That's what I'm asking.
Commissioner, let me just add one more thing. The motion that was made previously by Commissioner O'Malley, that, we were gonna have to come back, that would just start the process, because we're gonna have to come back with an actual resolution wording the question. That's gonna have to be approved in a future date by the Board of Commissioners anyway. So the motion today to that effect would just start the process. We would have to draft a resolution actually wording the question to go on the ballot. And then we'd have to come back and be approved by the Board of Commissioners and then sent to the election board.
Okay. The opinion of the three solicitors that are here at this point?
Commissioner Bruce?
Yes.
Can I just add one thing? Just to be overly cautious on the right to know and public participation, there was not a motion and I think members of the public did speak on the reassessment. Before you vote, you may wanna see if anybody from the public wants to address this issue. I know it's been a long meeting, but I would just.
We could take a break after this.
If anybody has public comment, I would just do that because it was not on the agenda, although the reassessment discussion was on the agenda. But just to be on.
One last question before we let them get to speak. What would be more ironclad, a contract or the referendum? This is for the three of you.
Referendum.
Okay.
I have a question. Because we, I have a question for Commissioner Notterianni. I'd like to know where it's written that businesses are reluctant to come to Scranton because of reassessment, because in all actuality, Commissioner, I think the governing body there that has been elected for 30 years is the reason people aren't coming to the city of Scranton. It has nothing to do with reassessment. And I'm sorry that you live there, but honestly, I don't agree with that statement whatsoever. I'd like to have some proof of it, though.
I will get you that information, Commissioner.
So there is? So there is proof saying that people?
There is, there absolutely is.
I find that hard to believe, but I can't, I'm interested to see that, because economic development doesn't seem to be.
I find it hard to believe, but I will get that to you.
Okay, I appreciate you getting that to me. And I also wanted to know, when will, when, you know, you said the system isn't working. So why would you want to continue to use the same system? Why, if it's not fair and it's not working?
We don't work it for the state. We can't change it. We have to work with the parameters that we're elected to do. If you can get the state to do that, I'll be glad to help you do that. And I think that would be a wonderful thing, to stop school tax with Bill.
Well, it went through the House, and it's gone through the Senate. So now, it's the governor that has to sign it next.
I'll be glad to help you do that, Commissioner.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Visiting delegations, anyone that'd like to speak on this issue.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Katie Hosey, 109 Delaware Street, German. As I stated at your last meeting, German is landlocked. There is no room for growth. You have houses that were built in the 1890s, the 1910s, the 1920s, and the 1930s. My one friend, who is 87 years old, his mother had bought that house when he was in the Korean War. When she passed, he obtained the house. He pays, it's not a big house, but what he pays, and if this goes through, his taxes are going to triple. He lives on Social Security alone. It's just not fair to these older residents to do this to them. And with being landlocked, what you're allowing is our council to lower the millage, like they said they're going to do, but then keep the millage low for a year, and then they're going to lambaste us, and it's going to go up. And it's not fair to the residents. I know, I can't afford any higher taxes, and I'm sure 90% of German can't. So I would just like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Mike Hatton Zarrow from Charles. Just on a procedural point, you're asking right now that the public make comments on doing a reassessment. Why do you not have public meetings in advance so that the public could show up at the meetings and ask their questions about the reassessment? Asking the public right now and then taking a vote on it right now is doing a complete disservice to the taxpayers of this county. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Joan Hodewannett, 220 Linden Streets, Scranton. This obviously, as Mr. Wallace pointed out, is a very complicated issue. And in the event this goes to referendum, if it goes down that path, I strongly urge you to schedule as many town hall meetings, other public discussions, put as much information as you can on the county website. I agree with the statement, and I forget which one of you made it, you know, that the public needs to be educated to vote not out of fear, or out of rumor, or out of myth, or anything else, but as educated as they can be. And I think, in this case, you are going to have people attend these town hall meetings because you're talking about an event that's going to hit their pocketbooks and their wallets. So I think they're going to be motivated to pay attention, and they're going to want to educate themselves. So I don't know what you're going to do at today's meeting, but should this end up going on the ballot in November, you need to schedule many, many opportunities for the public to be educated. And please, put as much information on the county website as you can. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Go ahead, Bob.
Commissioners, I own properties throughout Lackawanna County. Earlier, I spoke as a resident of the city of Scranton, but I have properties in Troop and Dunmore. In fact, we're doing a litigation problem right now in Troop, what's been played. When you look at the whole, look at the commercial business. Now, people have spoken about being residential, but what about the commercial impact that happens? The assessments aren't fair in the way they're done. Residential's one rate, commercial's another. The school districts in each and every town, Troop, Dunmore, German, Jessup, they all have different budgets, and they all have different issues. So there's no conceivable way that this could be fair and impartial, what might be right for Scranton, may not be right for Troop, or Dunmore, or Jessup, or those other counties. I believe, in all sincerity, that you should hold numerous town meetings, public meetings, for the public, the people themselves, to be able to come to a microphone, just as you give us the courtesy here today, to speak what their views are. Because no matter who's in this room, none of us are all that intelligent that we know it all. There's a matter of opinions that make your decisions as the commissioners, but hear the voice of the people, the business community, those that get whacked with all kinds of taxes in the business community. Jerry's very familiar with it. The commissioner is. So we don't just pay a property tax. We get hammered all over the place, from school tax, from federal, state tax, unemployment tax. So you have to look at the whole spectrum of what this includes, not just a property tax against a business or a household, because everybody has various issues. And it's a major problem. I don't think there's any quick fix. I agree with Commissioner Cummins that this has to sit back, and a lot of thinking has to go into it. We're not Luzerne County. I have properties in Monroe County, and Luzerne County, and Columbia County. So there's issues all over the place, and believe me when I tell you, everyone's a different nightmare. But I think the direction you're taking is a direction that has to be in the benefit of the people, not the pocketbook of the county. It's got to be in the pocketbook of the people that support the county and their local municipalities. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Joanne Wilson, Washington Avenue, German. Good day, and thank you for this opportunity. And I do believe, I agree with Mr. O'Terriani, education, 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 before it is even put on the ballot. Town meetings, as Mr. Bowles said, they're very, very important. And also, he mentioned, I must agree, all counties, all towns are not the same. We have a variety of issues, specifically German, where I am from. But I want to make this point. Mrs. Lorraine Cummings, Ms. Lorraine Cummings, excuse me, mentioned the House bill. I think the state has a great input and importance in this issue with Lackawanna County. That House bill is very, very important. It could help us not have the reassessment, and we can go forward, especially with the elderly. But I also feel, I had read about a state in the United States, that their reassessment happens when you sell your property. That property is immediately reassessed. But all homes are grandfathered. In other words, if my grandmother inherited a home, and they're living there, and she's elderly, she does not get reassessed until that home is sold. She is grandfathered. Immediately upon selling, then it is reassessed. I think that the state is not doing their job. Our representatives and senators should be stepping up to the plate. And I'd like to see something happen like that. This way, the elderly are protected and grandfathered, and all homes and businesses are reassessed upon the selling of that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
Anyone else? Okay, where's Commissioner O'Terriani?
He's coming right back. Do excuse himself for a minute.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Wait, he's back.
Okay.
Then we'll take a 10-minute recess.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm going to get back to where we're at. Like you said before, the previous motion, you know, we're here to protect the financial interest of our 214,000 citizens, especially our homeowners. They're paying all the taxes. And a referendum seems to be the absolute perfect way for them to make a decision, their own decision. You know, it's one thing for us to do a three-mil increase, or a five-mil increase, or a one-mil increase. But it's another thing for us to make a decision that could double someone's taxes, or drop them. It's something that's going to be done by the individuals of Lackawanna County that make up the electoral vote. I mean, they're going to, the electorate is going to vote on this. You know, this is a reason for people to come out to the polls. Our cemeteries are loaded with veterans that fought for the freedoms for us to have to vote. The people of Lackawanna County should make this decision on reassessment. I'd like to make a motion that a referendum of reassessment be put on the November general election ballot for the citizens to make a decision on reassessment. Our citizens to make a decision. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Roll call. On the question.
And the 15% tax increase isn't actually something that was even talked about, or a bond issue was talked about doing that, too. So that's not even true. That'd be more misinformation, would scare people, and they could not vote for it. On the question, second.
Okay. Also, on the question, I actually asked our CFO about that. It would be, if it was a tax increase, it would be 15%.
We had a tax increase for our $20 million payment.
Would that be 15% approximately, Tom?
Could we do a bond issue, Tom? Wouldn't that be the smart thing to do?
Excuse me, I was in the hallway. You're asking me what the cost, anticipated cost?
If we were, what would the military increase be?
If we did a tax increase.
Tax increase.
If, if we were to do.
If, because there's two different ways it could have been, a bond, absolutely.
If we were to do a reassessment, I believe that it would cost in the range of $12 million because of the work that would go into it, the need to acquire software in advance. If we were to do a reassessment without a borrowing, it would require us to raise taxes approximately 15% in the year that we were going to spend the money.
So that's a true number?
That is correct. That's, that's.
Bottom is an option, though.
Yeah, bottom is an option, absolutely. But it is 15% if we were to?
If we were, if we were to do it by increasing taxes to pay for the reassessment, as I said, I believe the cost of the reassessment would be in the $12 million range, and that would mean it would be almost nine mils, or about 15%.
In addition to the increase that would come with the reassessment.
Okay.
That would be the increase, Commissioner, that would be necessary to pay for the reassessment?
Right, thank you for confirming, yes. Because then after the reassessment was done, then you'd have on top of that increase to pay for the reassessment, you'd have another increase after it, so.
Our voters and our taxpayers deserve an opportunity to make this decision. And I'm hoping that they would all go in November and make the right decision on behalf of their families and their households. Roll call.
Commissioner Cummins? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to make, can I make a motion for a five-minute recess?
About 10.
10 minutes recess?
About 12, please. I'll give that a second.
Second, thanks. Okay. Okay, ready, everybody ready? Okay. Assessments all. Okay, we're reconvening this meeting. Are you good, Mark? Okay, we're reconvening this meeting. Yeah. Okay, we're going into resolutions, 17-0184, approving current payables.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County dis hereby approve the following payables from the Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 245, 334 through 246, 048 inclusive, totaling $2,911,328.51. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $3,685,976.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question?
Controller DeBilio had met, I think, well, he met with me, I'm not sure. I'm assuming he met with the other two commissioners and said that he checked everything, and everything was paid and approved by their office.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Cummins? Yes. Commissioner O'Terriani? Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 17-0174.
Approving a plan of financing by the Waverly Township Municipal Authority to undertake a special project for Lackawanna County. And I'm going to provide a brief summary of this. Approving in accordance with Section 147 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, a plan of financing of the Waverly Township Municipal Authority, declaring it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of County Lackawanna for the Waverly Township Municipal Authority to undertake this project for Lackawanna Junior College, otherwise known as Lackawanna College. And we're fortunate to have Attorney Brian Katslansky, our own bond solicitor from this, to explain this, as well solicitor for this project.
Commissioners?
Good afternoon, Brian. Good afternoon, how are you? This resolution is our standard health, safety, and welfare resolution and approval for tax exempt financings that you've seen on conduit deals before. No liability on the county. This project is really renovations to the Adams Avenue project and some refinancing of the college debt. Happy to answer. Any questions?
I think you answered them at the agenda work session, so. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan of financing of Waverly Township Municipal Authority to undertake a project for Lackawanna College. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a nice day.
Have a good day. 17-0175.
This is approving area agency on aging provider and professional agreements. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County dis hereby approve the Department of Human Services area agency on aging provider and professional agreements for calendar years 2017 through calendar year 2020, as attached. And there are several of these listed that Mr. Kevulich is going to explain to us today. I could read them name by name, but we'd be here until 2:00.
Good afternoon.
Good morning and good afternoon.
These contracts are the contracts that is necessary for the area agency on aging to remain in compliance with the Pennsylvania Department of Aging's regulations, as well as to keep critical services in place for our most vulnerable older adults in the community.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve an area agency on aging provider professional agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, any questions for Jason?
Yes, Jason, you are prepared to make any changes required if the state budget comes back with cuts?
We've already been informed that we would receive the same allocation that we have in previous years. And as far as we can see, and what we're predicting, is the lottery fund will remain in place so that it will continue to fund these programs.
So this is all funded through the lottery?
The vast majority of our funding does come directly from the Pennsylvania Lottery. We don't receive any state tax dollars for our programming. We do receive small allocations of federal money for specific programs.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 17-0176.
Entering into a medical assistance transportation agreement, be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County dis hereby enter into a renewal of an agreement with Commonwealth Pennsylvania Department of Public Welfare for the medical assistance transportation program with a rate increase previous year from $14.73 to an annual amount now of $18.80. And I believe Gretchen Wintermeyer is here from, yes, I'm looking up correctly. Gretchen is here to explain this agreement.
Good afternoon, Gretchen. How are you?
Good afternoon. So the MATP contract is a standard annual contract between Colts and Lackawanna County to provide transportation on behalf of the Department of Health and Human Services for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. Colts bills through the county. The contract has an increase this year from $14.73, $14.73 to $18.80 per trip. That's no increase for the county or Colts, that's just us, that's the amount that we're billing. So I, I think John Tom Show answered the question.
He was, yeah, he came in for the agenda meeting, absolutely. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into medical assistance transportation agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Gretchen. 17-0161.
Entering into a service agreement with Top Business Solutions, be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a renegotiated service agreement with Top Business Solutions for Lackawanna County lease copiers for an additional 18 months at $22,926.58. This has been approved by Solicitor Brazil and Director Kevin Mitchell is here to explain the agreement.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So used to saying "good morning," I was gonna say it just as a joke, but I figured. Today's not the day. So, uh, this, this, this proposal from Top Business Solutions, who's our current copier, servicing supply vendor, they are a co-star vendor, we have eight months left on the existing contract, this is just an 18-month extension, saving us $8,144 a month.
Great job, as usual.
Thank you. It's $8,144.20 a month.
That's the savings?
Yes, starting immediately, essentially, once we sign the contract and get the, get the new copiers ordered, which will be later today or tomorrow.
Do you know what that is for the rest of the, the remainder of the year, or no?
The remainder of the year?
Yeah, like how much we'll be saving, I mean, I could...
So it'd be six months at $8,000 a month, or 48, yeah, $48,000, $48,000 through the end of the year.
That's awesome, so I'll see that on your budget?
Sure, I'll show ya.
Kevin, you don't get a percentage of that as a raise, though.
Oh, well, maybe we can negotiate that.
Yeah. You're so good at negotiating, great job.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion entering into a service agreement with Top Business Solutions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the question, any questions for purchasing and financial and everything else he does? Okay, uh, roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani? Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Cap. 17-0181.
This is an agreement for legal services, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement for legal services and paternity and support matters with the Court of Common Pleas of Lackawanna County, the Domestic Relations Section, and Attorney Donald Frederickson, and Kathy Hardaway, our Director of Domestic Relations, is here to explain this agreement.
Hey Kathy, how are ya?
Glad he made the correction, I'm not Frank Castellano, as is on the agenda. But the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services and the County of Lackawanna enter into a five-year cooperative agreement, and that happened on July 15, 2015, and that expires September 30, 2020. In the midst of all that, though, we failed to have ratified the agreement with Lackawanna County Solicitor for Legal Services, that was effective October 1, 2015, and will go to the end of that cooperative agreement, September 30, 2020, and we also have an agreement with a private attorney, Jody Healy, for Legal Services and Paternity and Support Matters, effective January the 1, 2017, and that will also go through the cooperative agreement September 30, 2020. We use these services particularly for enforcement of cases that is a last resort, or appeals where they come before the master, and the, many times the defendant may have an attorney, the plaintiff does not, and the benefit of the children, we will provide an attorney for a master hearing.
So basically, this is the same, this is...
Same contract, yeah.
Yep.
We provide an attorney if need be, okay.
Very limited, we have a budget of $11,000, that doesn't go far in the world of legal fees.
So the number's the number, and, okay. Okay.
I do say, we are, as you may know, 66% of that is reimbursed by Bureau of Child Support Enforcement, any of the legal fees that we incur.
So it's basically $3,000,000 that would come to you.
Right, that you'll incur.
Commissioners, we've done this in the past, in fact, we do this with CYS also, the County Solicitor's Office enters into an agreement with the agency to provide legal services, it's part of the contractual obligation required by the state, and then we provide, we appoint a solicitor who will then handle that for the, for the county.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement for legal services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the question, are any other questions answered?
I appreciate the answers, I just, it wasn't in our work session, so, thank you.
Yeah, I don't remember neither. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks Kathy, have a good day, happy 4th of July.
Entering into an inmate communication services agreement, be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an inmate communication services agreement with Global Tel Link Corporation after receiving the recommendation of the Lackawanna County Prison Board to install and operate the inmate telephone system, video visitation system, correctional grade tablets, kiosk, and all related communications technology equipment at the county's facility, term to commence on July 1, 2017, and expire on June 30, 2020, and Warden Tim Betty is here to answer any questions on the agreement.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hey, Warden, how are ya?
Good, how are you? I just wanted to quickly mention that we, we, we have the recommendation of the review committee of the proposals that were submitted, and of course, as Mr. Wallace mentioned, the prison board yesterday endorsed the recommendation as well. It's a three-year contract effective July 1, if signed.
Not like the old days when they had it for 10 years, which was crazy.
Right.
Crazy contract.
Right, but the, the addendum is not on here, that I can request it at the Board of Prisoners' Meeting, so honestly, don't remember how Judge Droual phrased that in regards to the...
Oh, you're talking about the tablets, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we could probably just put into the minutes that per... Okay, go ahead.
I, I believe the question was that there would be a policy developed, Commissioner, once we entered into an agreement with the company, that would limit access to the certain content on the tablets?
Or who actually had possession?
And who had possession of the tablets, correct, Commissioner, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think that's more of a prison board issue, though, really, the Commissioner, we're just approving the contract for the actual services, and then the prison board would develop the policy as to who gets those and so forth. In other words, we don't control, the prison board controls who has access to them going forward.
And the warden is gonna actually, he's gonna, when, when we get it all vetted, you'll bring it back to us, so we'll have an understanding of how that's gonna be implemented at the prison.
The Board of Commissioners, Commissioner has to approve, because under the county code, the Board of Commissioners is the sole source of contracting for the county.
Correct.
So therefore, we approve the contract with the vendor, but then the prison board would approve parameters as to how the tablets are handled, who gets them, and under what conditions they get them. So that would, that would go through the Board of Commissioners' meeting, so, yeah.
So we don't need to add the addendum to this one?
Yeah, because we don't control, the Board of, Prison Board Controls Act, Commissioner.
Okay, thanks.
You got it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into an inmate communication service agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the question, are any questions answered? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani? Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Warden. 17-0178.
This is approving, approving a local economic revitalization tax assistance program, whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has enacted legislation known as Local Economic Revitalization Tax Act of 1972, which authorizes local taxing authorities to provide for tax exemption for certain deteriorated residential, commercial, other business property, whereas it is in the best interest of Lackawanna County to adopt this resolution. I will not go through and read the entire thing, which is pages long, but Mr. Kelly is here to explain the pertinent provisions of the agreement to the Commissioners.
Thank you, Chief.
Morning, and good afternoon, Mr. Kelly.
Good afternoon. Just to cover the highlights of this, this is a tax incentive program that all three taxing bodies adopts to foster economic development in a local town. There is a resolution in front of you to provide 10 years of tax abatement for any additional taxes that would have been assessed against the real estate for the improvements. It was a large brick building that burned down, it was demolished, and it sat idle for many years. Mr. Senafanta has had, or obtained the approval of Borough and the school, and I double-checked with them to make sure that everything was satisfactory with the properties itself in terms of clean out and getting it ready for development, and they're on board with this.
I know the property, it's right in the middle of Dunmore, the most torn, it was a big, big building back in the day, yeah.
It's a big factory that burned, he had to take...
Yeah, a few years ago. Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving local economic revitalization tax assistance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the question? Okay. Go ahead.
George, just to confirm that the school district and the borough have both signed off on this?
Yes, they have, and included, there's actually a resolution from the school, and the motion was also in there from council, so we do have approval.
And we're mimicking, we're mimicking the same provisions that they have, right?
The same provisions, what we do have is the, we have put in a provision that he has three years to get the project started, and it expires in May of, of 13 years from now.
Okay, thank you, George, sorry.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, George. 17-0179.
Entering into an agreement with Geisinger Commonwealth School of Medicine, be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Geisinger Commonwealth School of Medicine for the Administration and Operation of Business Education Partnership Project, providing out-of-school time support to junior-year students in the sciences. Agreement shall be effective July 1, 2017, through March 31, 2018, with an allocation of funds for the Regional Academy for Careers in Health Higher Education Initiative in the amount of $23,661. Mr. Kelly, our Director of Economic and Community Development, will explain the agreement further.
George. This agreement is running through the Workforce Development Board, it was a competitive grant that we were able to obtain. The total amount of the grant is approximately $132,000. We have six different projects, this is one of the six. It's a partnership between Geisinger Medical College and our Career Technology Center to help students get hands-on viewing, shadowing, and training in terms of health-related fields, so it's a great primer for them to get them on the road to a, a great career. It's for $23,661.
Okay. I'll tell you what, we're just lucky in general to have the newest medical school in the country in Lackawanna County, we really are, and it's, it draws a lot of people, there's a lot of people that are living in our community, absolutely doing part because of the construction of the building and the jobs that were created, it really is, it's, it's an asset to all of Lackawanna County. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with Geisinger Commonwealth School of Medicine. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, everybody's questions are answered, roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, George. 17-0180.
This is an appointment through the Workforce Development Board, be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individuals to Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board, with a term to run from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2019. Maureen Taylor, representing the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, Blind and Visual Services.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to the appointment to the Workforce Development Board, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the question? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani? Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks.
You're welcome.
17-0177.
This is a motion to accept the proposal for battery replacement from Core Power and Environment, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, for battery replacement at the Emergency Services Department at a cost of $42,575. Mr. Dave Hahn, our Director of Emergency Services, is here to explain the agreement.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is the project that has to be done every five years, and, so the replacement of the batteries for our UPS system, which is an uninterrupted power supply system which runs the comm center, again, it's, it's something that has to be done every five years, and we did it last time in 2012, and it is due for replacement. It should be noted that the initial price on this was $49,000, and we were able to negotiate down to $42,000, for $7,000 savings.
That's great.
How much was the savings?
$7,000.
$7,000?
$7,000, yes, ma'am.
From 49. Okay, I'd like to make a motion accepting proposal for battery replacement for Core Power and Environment, King of Prussia, PA, for battery replacement at the Emergency Service Department, for a cost of $42,575.0. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, the question? Okay. Good job on the $7,000 savings.
Good job on the savings, yeah. Is it, is that for the year, the $7,000?
That's for the five years, so.
Five years, okay.
So we don't have to do this again for five?
Oh.
So it's once every five years.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani? Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 17-0182.
Motion to extend Bayada Nursing Services Agreement for the Juvenile Detention Center on a month-to-month basis with all provision and rates in the 2010 agreement to remain in place pending the Solicitor's Review and Approval and Agreement, and Mary Stein, our Director of Juvenile Detention Services, is here to explain the agreement.
Hi, Mary, how are ya?
Good, how are you?
Good.
It's basically just to extend the current contract that's in place, month-to-month, with, with no term agreement.
Okay.
So that's, everything stays the same, nothing, money's exactly the same.
Okay. Okay, motion to extend the medical service contract with the Wright Center. The Wright Center, sorry, no, I'm sorry, wrong one, okay. Motion to extend the Bayada Nursing Service Agreement, the Juvenile Detention Center on a month-to-month basis, with all provisions and rates in the 2010 agreement remaining in place pending the Solicitor's Review and Approval of an Agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the question? Everything stays the same, right?
Yes, the Wright Center, everything stays the same as well.
Okay.
But it's just month-to-month now?
Just month-to-month now, yes.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani? Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 17-0183.
Motion to extend the medical services contract with the Wright Center Medical Group for Juvenile Detention Services on a month-to-month basis, with all provision and rates in the 24 agreement to remain in place, again, pending the Solicitor's Review and Approval, and Mary Stein will also explain this agreement to us.
Exact same thing.
Exact same thing, month-to-month?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to extend the medical service contract for the Wright Center Medical Group for Juvenile Detention Center on a month-to-month basis, with all provisions and rates in 2017 agreement to remain in place pending solicitor's review and approval of an agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question? Questions are answered. Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani? Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board.
Again, Commissioners, Bob Ballis, I guess I can just say Lackawanna County anymore. Starting off, there's just a couple things that I'd like to really get into. I appreciate the fact that this was put on the voters' responsibility to make a decision what we want to do. I think we're going to get a lot more input, and when we do make a decision, it's going to be an intelligent one. I spoke to Kathy Hardaway before, and I've spoken to Colleen Phillips. I'm involved in a PTSD study with a clinical psychologist in Florida. I've had him here, brought him up, he spoke at the Geno Merly Center regarding PTSD. There's a process that works, and I've been talking to them here because not everybody, not, it's not just about vets, it's about a lot of people who have PTSD from some type of trauma somewhere in their life. And what I like to do is ask the Commissioners to consider a study, funding a study here for Dr. George Linderfeld, he's from Florida, and he'll come up, he'll give you the presentation of how it works, what it does. We've already had a reporter from the Scranton Times actually try it out and has a good understanding of it. And with the support of Kathy and the other people, it's for the prison, it's for the other social services that we have, including, our most important part is our vets, is to conduct the study and put some funding money up, and I think it'd be a tremendous value to this community, especially those at the Geno Merly, and of course, our people that are in distress and don't know how to deal with it. And that's one of the things I wanted to bring before the Commissioners today. If you would put that into consideration, I could put you in touch with Dr. George Lindfeld. He's a clinical psychologist, he's wrote several books, Brain on Fire, and he knows what he's talking about. And once you see what he's doing and how it works, you'll have a much better understanding. And I honestly believe the Commissioners would support something of this magnitude, because look around us, those that are on drugs, those that are in all other problems. I think it'd be a tremendous impact, and I think we should become the leaders throughout the state of Pennsylvania on this, not be the followers. We have a lot of good people here, we have a lot of good vets, we have a lot of people in this community that I believe will sincerely support this program without question. So if you would give that some consideration, let me know, and like I said, I'll fly them back up here at my expense, and you can meet with them. So that's one part of the equation I wanted to get out of the way today. And lunch isn't on my fault today. I'm speaking quick now. Last time you said it was going to take us to lunch. I'd like to see the prison board go back to two times a month. Now, I was going to go to the prison board meeting today, and of course, it was yesterday. And more importantly, Dr. Zaloga there, and I would have loved to have been there when he was there. We have a lot of issues over there medically. I've gone through it. He's refused to answer questions regarding my medical care to the prison board. I definitely don't think his company in any way, shape, or form should be ever considered again for a renewal of his contract. But one of the issues that we really have, no, we got a lot of issues over there. We have a transgender issue, we have gays there, we have lesbians, we have a whole bunch of issues there. And I sat back and I start thinking, I mean, is Zaloga prepared to handle the issues there with the PTSD some of them may have? Highly unlikely, because he's not skilled in that profession. But I've been begging for pillows at that prison. I think what I might do now, seeing that we have such a variety of the gay community, as we want to call it, I think I'm going to reach out to them and see if they want to donate pillows to the jail. Since we're spending millions and millions of dollars in every other shape or form, we can't get a little bottle of milk for us old people that need to use it and other inmates, and you can't get a pillow to sleep on unless you go buy it in the commissary. Now, we're going to pay money for phones again, we're paying for this, we lose our social security benefits that goes into the, the system, we pay fines and costs, all that comes out, but yet we can't get a bloody pillow. And I would ask the Commissioners, just buy the pillows. It's as simple as that. Lauren knows everything about the pillows, she knows what kind of pillows they need, and they stay there, they're reusable, and we put this matter to rest. I'd like to finally see it, once and for all, go to rest. I was in there with a very serious neck injury, and I had no pillow. And it sucked to sleep there, because you couldn't sleep. And then it creates temperament, and so on and so forth, and then the word it has is an issue trying to correct people and keep people in line. And Pat, if anybody knows what goes on there, better than, well, not me, because I was there, but equally, you know the system. So if you would give that some really serious consideration. Other than that, I think I'm going to reach out to these communities and see if they'll donate the pill to take care of their people into jail. Might dress it up a little, too, put some color in there. It's kind of comical, but I think it might become a reality, and you know how I am, so... You know, I hate to put that on the side of the trailer, Lackawanna County prison needs pillows. You know, I'm sure they'll all jump on the bandwagon.
He's in their underwear on his truck.
To go back and look at things for taxing and all that. When I heard you say, geez, we got to do this downtown, we're going to support the mall, you realize the mall was paid for by the city of Scranton taxpayers? And we didn't get nothing for it. He only pays on a $3 million assessment on the mall. I pay a half a million dollars on a church they were tearing down that was only worth a dollar, and I paid $35,000 for it. And I have to go to court to fight that assessment now. And that had a zero assessment on it, and all of a sudden, they think legally they could go ahead and put the assessment on that church when it had zero, and put what they felt like.
Bob, why couldn't you just keep it as a church?
Pardon?
Why couldn't you just keep it as a church?
They won't let me put my collar on.
Why couldn't you rent, why couldn't you just keep it as a church, is my question?
Because of the way it was structured with the diocese of Scranton, and because they were Catholic churches at that time, they didn't want them to be called a church. It could be called almost anything else, but you cannot call it a church.
I think that's ridiculous. I mean, I wanted to make sure that that was on video, because I didn't know that.
Pardon?
I did not know that, so I wanted to make sure it was on video.
Yeah.
So you were told you couldn't keep it a church, even if it was Catholic?
That's correct.
Okay. So, yeah, all right.
So, but then all of a sudden bingo, I got this assessment out of nowhere on a building that was being torn down. Now, the hall next door, the kids play free there since I bought it. And do I have to go ahead now and say, even though they're tax-exempt as a nonprofit, put a fee on them to start paying, or tell them they got to go somewhere else to pay my debt over this unfair assessment? That wasn't a realistic assessment. Those are the things with the assessment that are going on. They're political assessments in some cases. The mall the city bought, 500 parking spaces, yet St. Patrick's Day, they turned around and paid five bucks to park there. So these are a lot of issues that we have to look at. One of the important things, I think, that came out the other day was the mayor held a town meeting. I think that town meeting affects everybody. And in the event we have another one where something like that comes up, I believe the Commissioners should attend it, because it's important. If Scranton fails, the county's going to fail. And what went on in there was a question about legal fees, which we brought up in here tonight that, or today, this afternoon, we didn't get that far yet, is that fees get exorbitant, and over there, they were ridiculous. The serious question I have, there was an authority that was sold, two authorities, the parking authority and the sewer authority. I don't know if legally the authority could turn around and give money to the city, because it has no participation really with the city of Scranton in any type of ownership in any way, shape, or form. It's a separate entity. So alls you hear, the authority could do this, the authority could do that, the city can't do this, yet the city took money from the authority, and I don't know if legally they could take that money and do what they're doing with it, and just squandering it and blowing it all over the place and not being held accountable, both the authority or the city of Scranton. And I would ask the Commissioners to look into that, because it affects all of us, if that is legal for the sewer authority and the parking authority to put money over into the city of Scranton. And one last thing before I do go. In September, and I'll be back to tell you more about it, we're involved in a thing with the American Towing Association, which they call the Spirit Ride. Coffin has been constructed by the American Towing Association, and it's being placed on various rollbacks and towing companies throughout the United States. And it's started off in Las Vegas. And the purpose of it, and we had our emergency people here today, they understand what it means with the move-over law, and that needs to start getting strictly enforced. Having been a first responder and in the towing recovery for over 50 years, we know what it is to get hit out on the interstates when people don't pay attention. This coffin is a representation of what it means to go on. We had Young Duschnig get killed up here on 81 by a tractor trailer that ran and killed him.
Shame.
So it's going to be coming here to Scranton, and I've been given the honor to transport it from here to another, to Herkimer, New York. And we're going to have it brought into the downtown Scranton area where we will do the transport, because I think that's where it needs to be, not in front of my business or something like that, but I want it here, and I'll, it's, I think, September 22nd, if I'm not mistaken, but I'll give you a better, but I'd like the Commissioners to be present there when we do this, because it represents every agency everywhere. I'm inviting the state police and all our emergency responders to participate in this, because it's all about us, and then, when I say us, I include myself with them. So that's something that we'll be bringing here, and it's going to have national attention to it. So I want to give the Commissioners a heads up. And then, finally, I'll give you the date, I could call Lauren or any one of you here, I'll give you the date. I'm presenting the flag, the 70th anniversary flag that was flown over Iwo Jima, and I bought the flag, it has the sand on it, and I'm donating it to the Marine Corps League and to all the veterans in Lackaw, in our area. And it's not just for Marines, it's for everyone that served in the service. And it'll be donated to the Marine Corps League. It has a tube of the sand from Iwo Jima on it, and I'm donating it in honor of Sergeant William Ginnost. He's the Marine who filled the flag raising on Mount Suribachi. That it's been my mission to go back and forth to Iwo Jima to recover his remains. I'll be going back there in the next several months to complete the mission, and I'm going to be doing that with the help of the President and Vice President, who have made this a much easier task than it was before. And that's it, guys, but you'll be invited to the flag raising as well, and I want to give you all a heads up on it, because it's important, it's our community, and these are the things, rather than people bitching, yelling, and shouting about stuff, these are the things that are important to show who we all really are. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
And I have to leave, I got a company to run. Thank you.
Bob, make sure that we're invited to that, Bob, that September 22nd event.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
That Young Duschnig and those, those other two that just got, oh, it's bad.
Yeah, I'll send it to you, Pat. I'll give you plenty of time, heads up, when it's, you know, because they're moving this thing all over the country.
Yeah.
You know, weather or something, they interfere somewhere in one part. It started off in Vegas. So it's coming to the Northeast, and that's where we'll pick it up, and we're going to be putting it on one of our rollbacks and towing it with one of our heavy wreckers to show the significance of bringing the body home. And it's important for all of us, especially our first responders.
Yeah, the EMTs.
That's why I brought it up today.
Yeah.
Start giving your heads up when it's coming.
Yeah, definitely want to be there from A to Z, absolutely.
Yeah, see, I don't care if they bitch about everything. Thank you.
I like the flag, too, that's good.
John Hodawan at Scranton. There was another interesting article in this morning's paper, Counties Settle Their Lawsuits Over Sale of Baseball Franchise. According to this article, Luzerne County Council approved a $4 million settlement offer. On the other hand, Luzerne County won't pay any money to end a countersuit filed by Lackawanna County. At the end of the article, it states, Lackawanna County and the Stadium Authority must approve the agreement at a public meeting. Donald Frederickson, General Counsel for Lackawanna County, expected Commissioners to decide whether to give the deal formal approval this week. The settlement wasn't on the Board of Commissioners' agenda for today. My question is, is there a public meeting in the wind? If so, when and where?
Don, you want to answer the?
If I can.
Okay, good.
First of all, Lackawanna County has not approved it yet, but they're going to be considering it for approval, okay? This is a lawsuit that has gone on for a number of years, and quite frankly, regardless of what it's settled for, Lackawanna County really gets nothing out of it. It goes into a capital improvement fund for the stadium. So both sides have been spending significant legal fees on it. When the sale was consummated many years ago, the sum of 73, 7,300,000 was theoretically to be placed in escrow to pay for any political litigation. We have discussed this, and quite frankly, there is a Stadium Authority meeting that's going to consider amending that agreement for payments relevant, relevant to this, but as of this time, the Commissioners haven't decided to resolve that. And whatever Luzerne County reported is simply not true, because Lackawanna County can approve it. They've done hundreds of times in the past settlements of lawsuits in their executive capacity. It is generally not done at a public meeting.
Okay.
It's approved by the Commissioners. If they're in agreement to it, they sign a settlement relative to the lawsuit.
So this figure of $4 million settlement offer that supposedly Luzerne County Council has accepted, is that not factual?
No, no, that, that's factual, that's...
Where does that $4 million come from?
There is an escrow account that has been set up from the sale of the Yankees.
Okay.
Okay?
So it's not tax revenue?
Well, but, yeah, but it's not tax revenues. Where the money is actually coming from is there's presently 5.3 million in that escrow account. The balance that goes to the Yankees will be paid by the Stadium Authority.
Okay.
Okay, so that's not tax money, that's, that's money that's sitting there for this specific purpose.
Okay, so I don't need to be scanning the legals every day looking for this public meeting?
No, you do not.
No.
It's okay.
Thanks, John. Thanks. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Cummings?
Well, everybody that was here that I would answer their commentary is gone, so... Other than Joan, who was talking about the digital law library, which we're looking at that, so there's some policies that we're still going to be working on, Joan, before they even understand how we're going to be utilizing those tablets yet, so we're not even sure how the prison board's going to vote on that. But I'm sure we'll be talking about it in the prison meetings coming up.
Oh, jeez, okay.
Oh, thank you. For the viewing audience, all I was saying was Joan had talked about the digital library, and in the prison board meetings, upcoming prison board meetings, we'll be talking about how those will be utilized with the policy and procedures that they set forth, so hopefully you'll be able to attend. Marie Schumacher's not here. Mr. Ralph Chase, I really appreciate the fact that he came in. You know, I get calls all the time in regards to reassessment, and, you know, unbeknownst to the reports in the Scranton Times, all the calls I get are against reassessment. I get letters about reassessment, or they're against reassessment. And I hear a lot of people that are in public office or government offices that are talking about reassessment, but honestly, in the general public, nobody wants reassessment. So I really would love to know who started this reassessment, because, you know, I, I mean, this tax is, the, the property tax is such an unfair tax. The items that came up, that he brought up, were so important, and the one thing that strikes me is that the people that are going to be harmed by it are those that actually maintain their properties. And that's amazing to me. I mean, you're, like I said in so many meetings before, people look at homeownership as an investment, and the one item that was taken out of context that I said was that when I purchased my home, I didn't look across the street to see what the people were paying in their taxes and compare them. What somehow was perceived as being said was that I didn't look at the taxes on the property I was purchasing, which, that's just ridiculous, that's not what I said. So I certainly didn't look across the street or next door to see what my neighbors were paying, or, you know, if it was a fair assessment, and that's what I was talking about, and how this tax appears to be pitting people against neighbor against neighbor, and it's just an unfair tax system, period. It's never going to be a fair system, because once the reassessments are done, they can be appealed, and they always are. And then the next, the very first appeal, it makes it unfair. That's the, the one that's passed with lowering their taxes, automatically, there it is, it's unfair again. So then apparently, the solution is, is to do this on a consistent basis. So here we're telling people, we're going to purchase a major investment, a home, let's just give it a low-ball number of $50,000. Over the life of that loan, you're going to pay possibly double in interest after you refinance it a few times to pay for your kids to go to college, and then you're going to finally, hopefully, pay off that mortgage only to have your taxes go up on a consistent basis every year it's reassessed. I mean, who would invest in a home if that's the way it worked? Would you? I mean, why would you invest in something that's always going to go up if you maintain it? Because it's not going to go down if you're going to maintain your property unless you let it go. So what's the point of homeownership, then? It's, it's a disgrace that this tax was even invented in the first place. I, I'm appalled by it, I really am, I'm appalled by this, this property tax. I'm appalled by this property tax. There's so many unfair portions of it, and to think that they would come up with a tax that they called the spot assessment when you sell your property to a new homeowner. I mean, that would just be too much common sense to, you know, do it through attrition, because obviously, the state legislatures just have no common sense when they come up with a law like this. You know, I mean, to put it on the backs of people who have owned their properties for 60 and 70 years is just disgraceful. I don't, I really, I don't understand how anybody can even think that that's okay to say, that it's all right to do this to our citizens. I just don't understand that. And I hope that people, you know, I don't think people need to be educated on the fact that their taxes are going to go up, and that the reassessment is something that is wanted every single year or every other year to make sure it stays up there. That's not real hard to figure out. So, you know, I have no problem with educating the public. As a matter of fact, I agree that we should. I am going to be holding one in particular meeting. If it's confirmed, it'll be July 19th, and that's going to be an educational meeting for both reassessment and House Bill 76. So David Baldinger is trying to work with me on setting that up, along with Commissioner O'Malley, and I appreciate, and Chief of Staff Andy Wallace, so thank you for your help with that, I appreciate it. And hopefully, that'll be one of many. But I just cannot say enough about how much this reassessment, I just, I hope that in their research, someone can tell me who came up with this brainstorm of an idea, because I think it's just a horrible idea, and I hope that, you know, we're not subjected to it. I really do. I hope the people vote against this when it does come up on the ballot. And I thank Commissioner O'Malley for putting that motion on the table, because it is a fair move, and people should have a right to vote on if their taxes are going to go up. And if the sole purpose of some of these municipalities are looking to reassessment is to increase their mileage so they can tax the people more, well, that just says it right there on where they're going with that idea. And the people should be able to have a vote on whether or not their taxes go up and down. As a matter of fact, I think Riverside, Riverside just did this last year, and they allowed their citizens to vote, and, you know, good for that school district. They allowed the people to vote, and the people voted, no. You know, it just seems like this reassessment is going down the road to no homeownership, and they want all these high rises built and apartment buildings. I mean, this is just, I think it's an outrage, but anyway. So on to other issues. The, Bob Bolis is talking about Scranton and their problems. I really don't have any, I have no opinion on Scranton City Council. Scranton voted for those people that have been running Scranton. I think they need a change, they need a really big change. I hope that they do get a change this, come this November, because, you know, they can, that's, that city council can complain about me or this board all they want, but the simple matter of fact is, is their avenue, because they were so overtaxed. They went from $6,000 a year in taxes to $17,000 within, I think, a four-year period. What business can survive on that? They were taxed right out of their own business. And it wasn't because they lived in Old Forge, it was because they lived in Scranton. And, you know, I know during the campaign, Mr. Wexler was talking about how he wanted to see some of the taxes that were charged to their citizens taken away, and I, there was a list, I think, of about 10 or 11 taxes that the city of Scranton charges. And just look at that list to know why there's no businesses in the city of Scranton. Who would move their business into Scranton when they're getting charged all those different taxes, along with just the regular payroll taxes that they have to meet and the federal taxes? You know, I get frustrated when I watch all their Scranton City meetings, and, you know, I would love for them to just come and talk with me. They don't need to try and make this big statement for the Scranton Times, put in their paper to condemn this commissioner. All they need to do is come and talk to me, but apparently, they aren't able to do that. They would rather make a show of whatever it is they're trying to do and get their name in the paper, I guess, for whatever purpose, I don't know. But I guess I'll watch the next meeting to see what else they have to say without telling me ahead of time. I'm glad to see that so many people came in. We've been talking about reassessment for over a year now. There was, somebody had complained, Mr. Canzero said he felt that we should have had more hearings prior to this vote. We have been talking about this for, what, since I got here?
David Off.
Since I got in, since before that.
During the campaign.
You know, we have been the most transparent board, I think, in the history of the board, of commissioners. We go and do evening meetings. We consistently try to bring the public and get the public involved in every single aspect of the grants that are handed out. Commissioner O'Malley, even like with the different programs that are being offered, he's constantly talking about promotions on the parks and the arts and gauge and all the different library funds and library issues that were constantly, I mean, Fran Pantuso and Joe, they do such a great job of getting the information out there. You know, our newsletter, another issue. Our newsletter has been cut down to, you know, bullet points, and, you know, it's trying to let people know who are interested in what's going on in the county. And, I'm sorry, but Commissioner O'Malley and Fran, and they do a great job in letting people know and being transparent on what's happening in this county.
Thanks.
On a consistent basis. So to say that people didn't know that Andy Wallace was going to be addressing reassessment today is just shocking to me, because we've been talking about, people have been requesting it and requesting it every meeting. So there's no way that people didn't know. I mean, we had people from, Mr. Chase was from Old Forge, we had people from German here, Scranton, more Scranton, another German resident. So people were aware of that, and I disagree with that statement 100%. And Joan Wilson, when she did come in and talking about, and Katie Hosey, talking about the properties down in German, this 87-year-old mother who bought, who bought the house, that's who we're talking about. That's exactly who we're talking about. You know, and I just got a call the other day, there's a couple that was married for 75 years, they're going to be talking to Fran, and, you know, people are living a longer amount of time, the longevity because of their health and better medical care we have here in America. You know, they're going to be in their homes a long time, and that's what homeownership is about. You raise a family, and you have a property that you can, you know, actually stay there until death, and that's what most of my patients ask for. They don't want to die in a nursing home, they want to die in their home. And I hope that we can respect that, and the voters vote the way that I feel is best for what their needs are in the future, and for our young generation who are looking at homeownership, because I never want to do anything to dissuade that part of the American dream in having a home and being able to raise your family the way you want. So thank you, and I hope everyone has a good Fourth of July, and have a great weekend.
Okay. Just want to also just remind everyone that Thursday, July 6th, 10:00 a.m., will be the commissioners' meeting, so please, anyone that'd like to attend, it'll be Thursday, July 6th at 10:00 a.m. Also, we have a picture that was in the paper. That's Lieutenant Leonard Namariak. He's in the Scranton PA, Scranton Police Department, and this was at our Bike Safety Fair. Fit in some fitting helmets, and Sam Tolak, and they gave out safety tips. I'd like to thank Christine Sullivan, I'd like to thank Lieutenant Melmanic, and the Taylor PD for being there. There was a lot of kids there, it was a lot of fun. Our staff was there, Fran was there, Joe D'Arenzo, everybody was there to have free hot dogs. It was a nice family fun day. On top of it, besides, it was a great day at McDade Park this past Saturday. Also, I'd just like to bring Fran up to the podium. And I got to, because there's no one better than Fran when it comes to talking something up. Fran, let's talk about July 3rd. What's going on at the courthouse?
Yes, sir. Big festivities. It's the Scrantastic Spectacular, so it's happening in downtown Scranton, right on the courthouse. We are going to have festivities beginning at about 4:00. We're going to have some food vendors down there, some music is going to be going on, and the Philharmonic will be performing at about 7:00 o'clock, maybe 7:30.
How are those fireworks? Are they going to be great fireworks?
Fireworks are going to be spectacular. They're going to be frantastic.
And it's free, and it's all, Fran, it's all free?
It is absolutely all free. The performance by the Philharmonic, it is underwritten, and the fireworks, we take care of with some of our sponsors.
Families, come on out.
Come on out, bring the kids.
Make some memories, enjoy the courthouse.
Bring your lawn chairs, bring the blankets. It's going to be a great time, as it always is. Our courthouse never looks so good with so many people attending this actual spectacular event.
So please, just remember, July 3rd.
The 3rd, it's Monday.
Monday, July 3rd, at Lackawanna County Courthouse. Festivities start at 7:30 and nightfall. We're going to have the fireworks, Philharmonic's going to be playing, it's going to be a great day, and it's free. And last but not least, I'd just like to wish everyone a very safe and happy Fourth of July.
I'm so sorry, I did forget. We had a great loss this past week. LA Tyrone from WILK passed away, one of the late, great radio hosts, and I just wanted to make sure that we had kept him in our minds, and my thoughts and prayers go out to the whole WILK family, and also Mr. Johnson, who passed away, who was candidate for Scranton City School District. And he was a very good, 48-year-old man, passed away so young. And thoughts and prayers go out to the family as well.
Very sad.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll call.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.